This conference will now be recorded.
This is a call to order for the Planning Commission of Ark City Campus. Today is Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. It's 5:30, so we'll start with the roll call. Josh, you want to do roll call?
Actually, we probably should do swearing in first. Tyson's not here, but we'll go ahead and do Dottie. She's done this all before.
Third time.
Did you hear from Tyson?
I didn't. I think he had surgery or something today, and so I didn't hear a lot of him.
Doing surgery or he had surgery?
Doing.
Doing.
Performing surgery. So he may be stuck in that. I think so. So if you'll repeat after me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of Planning Commissioner.
And faithfully discharge the duties of a Planning Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God. Is this new?
This is, we just tried to do it tonight some form more.
It's the first time. My third time on the planning.
What about the zoning court?
I don't do that on separate usually. We'll be doing that tonight. That's Tom.
Tom, you know your camera's on, right?
Wake up, Tom. Oh, you're on my.
All right, you want to do the roll call?
Um, yeah, so Tyson Blatchford, Lloyd Colston.
Here.
Brandon Jellings, Ian Coon.
Here.
Kyle Lewis.
Here.
Cody Richardson.
Here.
Dottie Smith.
Here.
And Tom Wheatley. He's here.
So we'll start off with public comments. Persons who wish to address the Planning Commission regarding items on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Any presentations for information purposes only. No action will be taken. Mr. West, where's yours?
All right. Good evening. Donnie, if you would, go ahead. They're kind of crisscross from pass around. My name is Landon West. I am the Director of our Kansas City Recreation Commission. And with the flyers, each one should just stagger, just take a stack and pass with the rest down. What I'm handing out here is a feedback opportunity for our community. Our Kansas City Recreation Commission, the City of Arkansas City, Cali College, and USD 470, which is our local school district, have been in communication and working together to try to get feedback from our community. This task force or this kind of group has been working for a number of different things, trying to get traction. But I think the biggest thing and most important thing that I want to bring to you guys is this top line up here where it says, thinking together, working together, better together. And that is exactly what this group can do. All four of these organizations are at a point where they know we can be stronger as a community if we work together and not work individually. This survey is going to be open until March 24th. It is an online survey. We also have paper copies. If somebody wanted to take a paper copy survey, you could do that at the City of Arkansas City or you can do it at the REC Center. Down there at the bottom left and the bottom right corner, the left one is a Spanish survey. The bottom right one is the English survey. If you have a smartphone, you can click that QR code. It'll direct you to that. Our rule for all four entities is to have 10% retention on this survey, which takes us to about 2,000 people. So we're hoping to get, you know, that many survey results compounded. And then we'll be able to review those results and hopefully be able to guide and direct kind of these entities into what does our community want? What is, you know, what is the future? This survey, the thing that we ask about the survey is that we have a forecasted vision. You know, we want to have 15, 20, 25 year vision into what our community needs, not necessarily what we're looking at as an immediate need or a knee jerk reaction need now. You know, our population has, over the past couple of years, due to census data, it has been reducing. You know, how do we get, how do we draw more people into our community to sustain what we have? It's a very light survey. It's 16 questions. And again, this survey will be compiled, taken back the first part of April, and all the entities will over kind of review through the data and kind of get that next planning stage. There's not a lot of public forums that will be going on prior to this closing. I think, you know, that public forum sometimes provides too much dialogue that really doesn't get any benefit to the survey. If there are places of employment, whether you guys take these back, take them to your friends, take them to your colleagues, take them to your places of employment. We, as these entities working together, we just ask that we can get as much survey results compiled back from our community as we possibly can. And so I appreciate your time this today, this evening, afternoon, wherever we're at in the day. But again, you know, it's four very large tax base entities trying to do the best for our tax dollars to best utilize and serve our community. So is there any questions that I could answer or draw on from any of you?
I will comment that we have done similar surveys without very much participation. So good luck. Good luck with that. I hope you get lots of participation. That's a big issue.
Yeah, it is. And you know, that's why we're trying to hit these. I know, you know, different civic organizations, we've tried to take it to them. We're putting them at the library and we're going to go uptown and try to drop them off at businesses and all the things, probably all the same similar pushes that have been done in the past. You know, the one thing I guess maybe I might consider as being different is with these four entities working together and the tax bases that they serve, we should have input from people, you know, from our community, from our citizens that are paying those dollars. And if, if we can get them to start thinking future, forward thinking rather than right now thinking, because if those census data and trend data continues, our city and our community, you know, it goes outside of Arkansas City, but our community will eventually die. And that's, that's a sad, sad thing where, you know, we should be growing. We should be, you know, being invigorating to our community. And I think working together with these groups, with these organizations, you know, we've got the thought process of what does a community desire at the forefront? And, and we want to do that forward thinking, like I said, with a 15, 20, 25 year forecast. And so, you know, we can't do anything without input. Obviously, if you guys remember or recall what happened in Winfield, you know, they, they took an idea to the public and the public didn't like it. And, and so we don't want to do that. We don't want to think for the public. We want answers from the public before we really try to create anything to move forward with. So just kind of repeat myself, I just, please take these back, push, complete the survey yourself so you have an understanding of what it is. Again, it's a very simple 16 question one. There are opportunities to fill in the blank if you want to write or draft something up. But anyway, I think I've still on your three minutes. So thank you, guys, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Congratulations on being on Facebook.
What was it?
It was all right.
Oh. We'll try anywhere and everywhere.
All this, all city employees got it emailed to them today, too.
If you can get participation, you might have some stuff, some more stuff.
Yes, keep it going. But yeah, so as you mentioned, yes, school district, they've pushed it. They've pushed it through all their talking points, staff, student emails. And there is no age, you know, you don't have to be 18 or older to complete it. So share it. There are questions about household numbers and income and different things. But, you know, we've done it to all of our, our staff and our members at the REC Center. And I know the college has shared it on their Facebook page and their social feeds and so on. So, you know, it's a, it's a huge market and hopefully we can just get the responses. So, all right. Well, thank you. That's all. There's no other questions.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Yeah, because we struggled. Survey process. When, how few, how hard to put a little push in? Not hard enough, to be totally honest. And COVID kind of messed with it, too. When we did the 2013 plan, we sent it out in water bills. And we also sent it, we had an online version, right? I think we did that, too. Had a whole lot of response from that. But this was also 10 years ago. So thanks for all that. Do you remember how many, Jim, that there's?
I don't remember the exact number, Josh, but it was, you're talking to the guy that hand tabulated the survey results. And I think the survey was, you know, we tried to hold it down, but it was maybe 30 or 40 questions and five, six, seven, eight pages long and a lot of rankings, you know? And we really did try to hold it down, but so we did discourage turnout. And we got a really good response. And I sat at the kitchen table for a number of nights, just hand tabulating those because I'm not smart enough to figure out how to do it any other way. But it was good. It was good. And the other thing we did, I don't know if you did it this time around, but we had an open ended part of the survey where it just says, tell us what you think, you know? And by God, people told us what they thought. And it was, there's a lot of, you know, I didn't come to turn to talk about this, but you know, there were a number of pretty harsh statements that were made, but those were easily outweighed by the people that just had thoughtful responses, whether there was constructive criticism or, or even a few praises in there. It was really good. That was, I think, in all the years that I've done comp plans, I think that was as good a response, both in terms of the number responses and the quality of the, you know, the input that people had. It was, it was good. And then we also had a couple of town meetings. I think at least a couple of town meetings before the public hearing where we talked about different components of the comp plan. Am I already into my X number of hours on this?
You did three minutes.
How long ago was that?
I'm sorry?
How long ago was that?
How long tonight?
No, how long ago was that?
It's me. I got really bad here.
And I have to wear a mask.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
How long ago was that survey that you're speaking of?
How, how long was it?
The 2013? 2013.
2013, thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's me.
Well, if you want to introduce yourself and kind of tell us what you're here for.
Has anybody seen this yet?
The floor is yours.
You tried to hold the paint off until the last.
Well, I, I think I did, you know, so they probably.
This is a pretty lengthy document and I'm not going to cover everything in it tonight, but it is intended to be a resource to you, if you will. Is that full 43 pages?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to talk about, I'm going to run through each one of the subjects on here and hit the high points and make references back to the handout. It wasn't go through, but it'd really be nice to have a dialogue going. But I did a couple of things about myself. I'm a sixth generation Kansan on my dad's side anyway. And the first five generations were wheat farmers, okay? I'm one of the ones that fell off, off the truck, you know? And instead of farming, went to law school. With K-State, KU, after getting out of law school, I went to work for the League of Kansas Municipalities. And I don't know if that rings a bell with any of you, but it's a statewide association with cities. And we did a lot of, a lot of advocacy in the legislature and in the courts and a lot of public education efforts with city councils, the city commissioners, chairs and whatnot. Probably the single biggest project I had in the years that I was attorney for the league was lobbying the legislature, and first of all, putting together, lobbying the legislature on a rewrite of the Kansas Planning and Zoning Act, which is the enabling legislation. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. But it's the enabling legislation that you all work under. It's the enabling legislation that allows you to adopt zoning regs and comprehensive plans. And it was, what I was working on was trying to bring that enabling legislation up to date. It'd been, the last time it's been touched, I think, was in the 19, early 1960s. So we did our best to bring it up to date. I sit where you guys sit. I've been a planning commissioner on three different planning commissions over the years. Topeka and Shawnee County years ago had a joint body called the Metropolitan, Topeka Shawnee County Metropolitan Planning Agency, Planning Authority. And I was a mayor's appointee and served there about a total of eight years. And at the end of the eight years, Topeka and Shawnee County got a divorce. They just, they had pretty divergent views of land use and land use planning and community planning and everything. And yeah, neither side was completely right or completely wrong, but it was just a different mentality. And so it split. And shortly after that, I moved out of town and into the unincorporated area. So I was, served a couple of years on the Shawnee County Planning Commission, a new creature. And then moved back to town a few years ago. Now I'm on the second term by working on the Topeka or serving on the Topeka Planning Commission. So all in all, it's 13, 12, 13 years going on. So I know everything there is today, okay? And you can test me. I do have a history with Ark City. I worked, you know, going back to the time I was with the League of Municipalities, I would have dealings with the city attorney, the planning director. I've lost for the people before you, Josh, but I know they were, they were there. Worked for the city manager at Ark City, a series of them over the years. And then in the, around 2013, 2012, we came in and was hired to rewrite, redo your zoning and subdivision regulations. And those are still the basic documents you have, correct?
Even a few amendments, but the structure is the same.
So, so I'm responsible for that. And then 2013, 2014, I think 2013, according to my notes here, did a comprehensive plan that we talked about with the survey and the town meetings and all that. Worked with a woman named Wendy Lee, who was the Community Development Director at Ottawa, recently retired from that. But she and I spent, made a lot of trips down here, putting together the comp plan, which I now understand you guys tossed in the wastebasket and are moving on and approved. I hope you've improved it. It's a fairly basic plan, nothing wrong with it, but it wasn't, wasn't dramatic. You know, it wasn't, wasn't an exciting read. So I hope what you've got in the works now is, is, is dynamic. But I haven't seen it. But.
We tried.
But anyway, that's, that's me. I've been doing this, I've spent the majority of my legal career working with cities and counties and primarily land use, planning, land use regulation area. And I, and I do that, I don't know if it's important for you to know this, but I, I do have a strong belief that good land use planning and regulation can significantly affect the quality of life of people in the community. I mean, I don't know if you share that sentiment or not. I hope you do. I hope I don't go overboard on it, but I really do believe that. I grew up on a farm and how land is used and how it's wasted, you know, or how it's productive, overall how it's used, kind of got instilled in me at an early, early age. And it's still important to me. So anyway, I will try to do my best, but I will not have all the right answers for you. But I'm hoping that the experience I've had as a planning commissioner and working with cities and counties around the state, including this one, you know, that I could at least fake an answer to you for any, any question that you've got. A couple of ground rules. I'm not here as a substitute or an alternative to advice you get from the city attorney. Okay? So if I, anything I say that is contrary to anything the city attorney has ever said to you or will ever say to you, you know, it's still he, isn't it?
It is he, yes.
Okay. The city attorney, his, his advice trumps mine, okay? I've gotten, not in competition with him. Secondly, and I'm sure you understand the significance of this, we can talk about fact situations and scenarios and hypotheticals all evening, but don't talk to me about or ask questions about something that's already in the pipeline. You know, some plat that is, that Josh is dealing with or rezoning or conditional use permit, you know, don't, don't get me involved in anything that's actually underway. Hypotheticals are okay, okay? Even thinly veiled hypotheticals. Last thing, I really do want to have a dialogue with questions. If you've got questions about anything that I say that you want to, you know, want to flesh it out or if you think something I say is wrong, which can happen, you know, call me on it.
You just said earlier that you knew everything about this.
I'm sorry?
You said earlier that you knew everything about this.
He did.
It shouldn't be wrong.
Well, if I, if I think I'm winging it, I'll warn you. Okay.
And let me invite you, Barrister, that you are being recorded.
Yes.
I warned him in advance.
One other kind of, yes, an opening comment. And something, because I'm getting close to retirement, real close to retirement. I, I insist on making this point. You know, sitting here, even as an advisory body, I mean, you don't have final say over very much, but, but you play a critical role in, you know, in the legal process that, that the state has fleshed out or has, has, has put into the Enabling Act. So what you do is an important piece of the, of the overall process. And that overall process is really, I hope you kind of keep in mind just how influential, how important it is. I think land use regulation is probably second only in consequence to the ability of the city commission to pass a law that if you violate it, you go to jail. Okay? You pass an ordinance, violate it, go to jail. That's, that's an impairment of somebody's liberty. That's pretty significant. Well, you all pass zoning regulations that, that dramatically affect what I can do with my property and consequently dramatically affect the value of my property, right? If I've got an open field or an open lot, I got soybeans on a, you know, field on the edge of town and I want to put in a business park, you know? And I got visions of making millions of bucks off of it. And I come down and I talk to Josh about it and says, well, I've got to get this kind of zoning, you know, and maybe I'll need to get a conditional use permit and all that. I place the process to me and you guys sit there and listen to my application and you listen to my neighbors and other members of the community during public hearing. And you say, sorry, Calp, we're going to recommend denial. And send that denial to the city commission. And the city commission agrees with you and turns me down. So my visions of great wealth, you know, of that property go down the tubes. Well, you know, the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, in a, living in a time when everybody questions all levels of government and the authority that is, you know, you question the institution. You say, you know, whether it's federal government, state government, now local government is in the crosshairs. Okay? And that's the reality you live in. But surprisingly to me, you know, people just tend to accept that their land is zoned, their property is zoned and it's restricted to certain uses. And if they get involved enough about it, they can figure out, well, I can come in and ask for a different zoning so I can have a different use of my property. And maybe I'll get that, but maybe not. But the idea that the, that the city says, this is what the land can be used for and nothing else is very, very significant. And it really goes, it's really accepted by the public at large. And that may be because you guys started zoning in, I looked it up today. I think 1931 was the first set of zoning regulations in Arkansas City. So it may be just, you know, it's in the water, you know? Everybody accepts it, which is from a, from my perspective, that's great. You know, that it's got legitimacy, it's got acceptance by the public at large. And I hope, I hope to continue that on. But, but you know, your ability to, to, to tell me what I can do with my land, again, as part of that process, it goes on up, on up to the city commission for final action. But, but that's a real consequential power that you have. And because of that, because of the, overall, because of the ability to restrict or, or expand the potential use and development of property is so, so consequential, a body of laws built up, you know, both federal and state, and they've got local laws too. But federal, state laws are in a response to that authority that you have, that power that you have as a planning commission and a governing body to control how land is used and developed. And we'll talk about, about, you know, it's not entirely due process of law, but that is probably the single most important thread that runs through the restrictions upon your power or the limitations on how you exercise power. It, it, again, it's not only due process of law, but that is, that is a major part of what we're going to talk about. In that handout, if you look on the second page, back to the first page, maybe, you'll see what the major topics are. And I'm going to spend maybe just a few minutes on comprehensive planning because you guys have just gone through that process. But they talk about zoning, the vesting of development rights, nonconformance of law, which I think you probably have seen, except for the new people, you know, you've seen, seen people come in and say that, you know, the regulations that you just passed or amend are grandfathered. You know, I, I don't have to comply with, with, with what you have. Sometimes people are right on that, sometimes they're, they're wrong. But there is a body of law, there's quite a bit of material in the handout that talks about nonconforming use, nonconforming lots and nonconforming structures.
But we don't actually enact the laws. We're just an advisory board.
For the most part, but you know, that.
So that means we wouldn't be held liable for the final decision.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to imagine a fact situation where, you know, you'd have to go so far off the rails, you know? Your, your decision, it's a governmental decision, okay? And it's, you know, and the folks that are really in the, in the, that are targeted for, for people who are outraged by land use decision, you know, it's almost always going to be the final decision makers, you know? But the legality of what you do, we'll talk about this, the legality of what you do, the legal legitimacy of the recommendation that you make, you know, you, there are pitfalls. There are things that can happen along the way that make that recommendation null and void. And in certain circumstances, that can then do even the decision by the city commission, the final decision by the city commission. We talked about that, too. But for the most part, you're advisory, but the law, recent court decisions are putting more and more significance on the role of the planning commission, which again, I don't know how you view that, but my perspective, that's good news. It's good news in cities.
I agree.
That is good news.
I mean, you guys have, I really am going to spew you the sermons, okay? But you guys, you have one job, you know? You got one job, it's a fairly big umbrella, but it's, it's land use planning and developing regulation and use of land. The city commission, keep pointing the wrong way. The city commission up there, you know, they got 100 things on their table, right? But the law says they make the final decision on, on most of what you, what you work with. And so that's, that's, that's a reality, not going to change that. But the input that you guys have, the quality of the work that you do, can go a long ways towards making that final decision that the city commission makes legal and defensible, okay? that the City Commission makes legal and defensible, okay? There are, again, we'll talk about it, there are areas, topics we'll cover tonight where you guys do the heavy lifting, right? The City Commissioner is going to make the final decision, you know, whether they want to or not, whether that's good for them or not. They undergo, make a final decision. But hopefully, they put a lot of importance upon what the planning commission says, what your conclusions are and the recommendations that you make. I've worked with cities and counties where the planning commission recommendations are gold. You know, the City Commission, the City Council deals with the recommendations or when the matter comes before them, rezoning, or conditional or special use permit, you know, they look, they deal with it, they make their decision based upon the record that the planning commission hands to them. They don't take any new evidence, no new testimony, no new hearings. And there are other communities I've dealt with where the planning commission makes their report and the governing body kind of goes, okay, we'll consider this, we'll consider what the staff says, we'll consider what the planning commission says, but we really want to hear from you folks, you know? And so you have a redo, you have the applicant come forward, you have members of the community come forward, essentially an informal public hearing.
So when we make our decision and we bring that to the board, what would be your recommendation on that presentation?
On how that presentation is made? Well, I don't know historically how it's been done.
Historically, it's been done through the staff.
Yeah, well, that's the way, that's the way we do it, that's the way most communities do. In fact, any client that I can think of over the years, that's where you've got professional staff, that's the job with a professional staff. If, having said that, there can be an advantage of having a planning commission, usually like the chair, be present or even making presentation. And it's a matter of dynamics and how personalities work. Some governing body members, some elected officials deal differently with the appointed officers that they put into office differently than they do staff, you know? I've seen that, and you can imagine that's been the case. So there are times where on a particular issue, it may make great sense to have a member of the planning commission, and again, that needs to be the chair in 99 times out of 100, make the, in conjunction with a staff report, you know? Tell the governing body, this is the thinking, this is the consensus position of the planning commission, you know? Sometimes beat the point to death, but sometimes elected officials will find it more believable coming from one of the bodies than from staff.
Yeah, I think that's why I was bringing that up. I feel it would carry more weight if a member of the...
You feel what?
I feel like it would carry more weight if a member of the planning commission were to present the advice or considerations.
You know, it's you guys' call. Well, I mean, the City Commission can say how we want to have this too. I mean, they control that too, but it's a matter of, again, the dynamics, the individuals involved and how people respond. You don't want to cut out the staff, but to give you, I'm jumping around here a little bit on this carefully orchestrated presentation I have. I have worked with cities where the staff, staff makes a recommendation of the planning commission. And that's such a duty, your report carries within a recommendation. I recommend approval, I recommend denial, okay? The planning commission, for whatever reason, goes the other way. Maybe after the public hearing, they hear something new, you have discussion and you conclude that there's an issue out there that is more important, that cuts in a different direction than what staff does. But it's very possible, you know, it happens. And then, but the point I was going to make was that in some communities, then the planning staff's recommendation gets tossed overboard and all the governing body hears is the recommendation of the planning commission. And while that may be the most important thing, that the recommendation of the planning commission, that's what's responsive. If I'm an elected official, I'm going to want to know what staff, what the staff's recommendation was to the planning commission because we're, taxpayers are paying this guy, right? And so I want to know what his conclusion was, or his recommendation was, and not to challenge what the planning commission's decision was, but just to have that information, not to be cut off from that information, you know? But the recommendation that goes to the City Commission is the recommendation of the planning commission. You know, that's the official recommendation. But in the way of background, I would want to know what the staff, what the staff's recommendation was. And it can be a delicate thing at times, but say, both of you are presenting to the City Commission and you at the planning commission took a different view of the matter that staff did, you know? And that's all comes out, that's part of the process. You, the staff says, I made a recommendation of approval, the planning commission, in the words of the chair, you know, explains why the planning commission did the denial, okay? Now I've got, I know everything at that point. And I can synthesize that and make my final decision as a member of the governing body.
I think it's a good idea for the chairman of the board, this board, to go to the commission along with Josh. I think I was a commissioner and it would have helped tremendously in the decisions that were made.
We had before, I think all important matters.
Yeah, I think it would carry weight.
So we start making these decisions. Yeah, I know.
No, you shouldn't, you shouldn't.
I think it would actually bring you somewhere to leave. Because it's covered straight from the horse's mouth, it's supposed to second.
I'm not going to make a blanket endorsement of one practice or another, but in the right circumstances, having the chair be there can help create a relationship between the governing body and the planning commission that might not be there if it's just staff being present. I think most cities don't do the, don't have the planning commission chair or anybody else being present just because of the time demands, you know? It's just, I mean, you're a volunteer body.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary on all occasions, but on the important ones.
They're all important, but the real important, the real...
I will say, like, the comprehensive plan last week, Tom was presenting. He didn't speak, but he was there.
Yeah, at least, just even a presence.
And they'll know who's calling, like, the general, and recognize that you're there.
What you're going to do, the new comp plan that you all have recommended to the City Commission, that is, right now, as we speak, is before the City Commission, or they've already acted on?
No, it's before them, it's been presented to them and they just take...
And that would be my question, did you make the presentation?
I did.
You know, yeah, well, you know, that's a good opportunity, that's a big picture. The comp plan's a big picture, it's not like a rezoning that might be controversial. But, you know, having the, being present for the presentation on the comprehensive plan, you know, sends a message of, you know, ownership and...
Yeah, exactly. Bring the support.
Anyway, those items that are on there, those five or six items there, you know, that's what I hope to cover here, you know, either in great detail or in passing. Extraterritorial regulation is still a, that's still a third rail down there. It's a forbidden topic.
Very much. So we didn't really breach it very much, even at this point, because of what happened last time.
Yeah, and I'm going to, at the reference to be...
The, anything in the three mile area, we initially, when we did the 13 plan, we proposed that zoning be extended to that whole area. Actually, not the whole area, just that growth area. And let's just say it didn't go very well.
Yeah, we had a lot of public input, not from the citizens of our city.
It was citizens of the big growth area.
That happened in, what, 7007, 6007? That turned into a mess then too.
Yeah.
That's when Parker Field came in, that's why Parker Field came in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Did you have a plan? From what I understand, you have to have some kind of plan of all the city services. Is there a plan accompanying with the...
We really didn't have a plan for services.
No.
This wasn't annexing, this was just zoning.
Yeah, if it annexed, yes, we would have had it.
It was a step.
Oh.
That was the city plan. It was step one, it was to control.
But the plan's not required, so...
And the county still has no zoning.
Isn't that kind of a conflict of interest if you're not providing city services, but you're, which is, you know...
That's been debated this year in the state house.
Well, I mean, how could you rule over somebody without providing services?
We can, number one, I mean, the laws, the state laws specifically announce that.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, well, sure, yeah. I mean, you can, I mean, it was something that we wouldn't have proposed it back, you know, in 2013 if it wasn't something they legally could do. And, you know, we'll dispense with this extraterritorial, we'll cross it off the list here with just a couple of points, I guess. A lot of what happens, a lot of what can happen on the edge of the city has very immediate consequential effects upon what happens inside the city. You know, if I want to, if the city's comprehensive plan indicates that my property is going to develop, the property behind me is going to develop as residential subdivisions over time, and I'm out in the uncorporate part of the county and I'm unzoned, I can do anything I want with my property, and I decide, well, I'm going to put a rock quarry in right on the edge of town. Well, that has consequences for the city's plan for future growth because it means there ain't going to be any future growth in that direction, you know? Or maybe I'm going to put a feedlot in, or it would have been something that will have a pretty immediate dramatic effect upon future growth in the city. So, you know, that's the city's perspective. The city has responsibilities for its citizens, you know, to protect the citizens and the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens, and that includes the property of citizens.
So it has to be adjacent to the city boundaries? Does it have to be adjacent to the city boundaries? I mean, how can you make claim over it?
How far out can you go?
You, if you can plan, the city can plan. And I don't know if you did any, if your comp plan showed...
I'm talking about the zoning.
Yeah.
Like, how can I say, well, I'm going to zone some territory, you know, the city of our city is, you know, on the other side of the bridge or way outside of this...
Well, the state law says you could zone property up to three miles from the city.
Okay, that's what I was going to say, okay.
And always, I don't know of any city that has ever attempted to utilize extraterritorial zoning that didn't have, begin right at the city limits and go out. I suppose it is possible, it is possibly possible to have detached area, but it wouldn't make a great deal of sense. It probably breaks legal issues. So let's talk, again, just a couple of minutes about planning. And it's recent experience, you've all, you've all cut your teeth on development of a comprehensive plan. Interestingly, state law doesn't require you to have a comp plan, okay? Kansas is one of a small number of states that doesn't mandate the development of a plan by a city that wants to regulate land. So it's kind of a scary thought, but there are a number of communities in this state which have zoning of the land without a comprehensive plan, okay? So you're just strictly regulating the use of land, you're not, you're not doing it with a comp plan that is a touchstone, you know, that you use it to guide to what is the proper zoning of the property and maybe what's the proper rezoning over time. You don't have a comp plan to guide you. But, so anyway, so you didn't have to have a comp plan back when I worked on it. And before that, it was 2002, I think, was the comp plan that Booker Willis did. So you had that, and you got your new one, you didn't have to do it, why'd you do it? Well, I hope, you know, consciously or subconsciously, the thought process was you have a comprehensive plan in order to improve the quality of life of citizens. And that's supposedly why we're all here, right? That was to do good for the citizens of the community. And I believe that, and I think that should be the motivation behind having a plan. I have worked with city planning commissions and also some city governing bodies where that's not a universally held belief, you know, of having a plan. But is everybody on the same page here? After go through the process, it's a time well-spent and it's a legitimate mission for the planning commission.
Rightfully, I mean, you have to get reason for the cause or the decisions.
When you state, state law says that zoning impacts can be three miles outside city limits, do some cities in Kansas build fence out that far so that they can extend their three mile sphere of influence? In other words, could we zone three miles out on 166 and come back three miles in to our city limits, not annexing any real property, but just strips of land? Is that possible?
Well, there's an important distinction between annexation and extraterritorial zoning. And that's why, that's how things fell apart back in 2013 because too many people had just locked in the belief that that's, that it was one of the same. You know, and it's not. Extraterritorial zoning, more often than not, is actually an alternative to annexation, you know?
But my point is that some jurisdictions, and I'm an Okie, so I'm understanding this from an Oklahoma standpoint, they annex strips of land along the highway in order to influence our neighbors out that far.
Yeah, well, Kansas, a few years ago, 10 years ago or so, a city not too far from here did a strip annexation in order to capture a casino site, okay? And at the time they did it, it was legal to do it. But they literally, they just, they just went down a highway and not just the highway right of way, but some properties along both sides of the highway. So it was, it was legal, what they did. But it raised a lot of eyebrows and a lot of resentment in the capitals, the legislature. So the legislature did what they do, when somebody, when a city or county does something they don't like, they need to change the law so nobody else can do it. And so those kind of strip annexations are now prohibited.
We have some things annexed that don't join the city limits. It's not, it's just, is there any issue with that? I mean, it's not a strip, it's just out there by itself, it's an island.
An island? Well, again, we're getting annexation and...
Yeah, apparently that's currently...
There is a provision in the law for cities to annex islands, right? But it's seldom used and it always requires the approval of the county commission.
We had to go through that when Patterson Park, for example, was annexed. And then the country, isn't the country called a state's island?
That provision of law was put in, you know, many years ago, and the original justification for it was cities having, might have an airport outside the city limits and, or a water well field or water treatment plant, you know, out some distance from the city, and you want to be able to bring it within the city limits. For one reason, you pass ordinances that protect, you know, or control what activities could occur on that property and, you know, exercise the police power on it because it's part of the city. But, but you've always, since day one in Kansas, you, in order to get that kind of an annexation, you have to get the approval of the county commission.
Okay. Another good example of that is like Winfield Lake, obviously a long ways from Winfield, but when you're on the lake property, you're in the city limits.
Yeah, to your point, you see that a lot.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm trying to understand, how things work up here.
Well, the extraterritorial, just to maybe put a final touch on it, maybe, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a non-starter in this community, uh, just because of the historical, the historically opposition that the, that the county has to it. In truth, nothing prevents the city from adopting zoning regulations outside the city limits at any time, in the absence of any county zoning. But the problem with that, uh, besides the political problems of it, the legal problem with it is at any point in time, the county can adopt zoning regulations over that same area, and just, it, it removes the city's authority.
So, so the county has authority ultimately?
Yeah, they have ultimate authority. What was attempted, what was being discussed back in ten years ago was the idea of having an interlocal agreement with, with the county, where there would be a common understanding of, of the advantages from our perspective, my perspective, advantages of having some, some city authority outside city limits. But that again, uh, that ran into, uh, spirited opposition.
And when you played that card, my thought was it would be to the city's advantage if we care about the zoning of that property, then go ahead and annex it.
Well, yes, but typically, it, it, I think in this community and a lot of places around the state, uh, annexation is a bridge too far. You know, i- if, if there's an understanding that, you know, the zoning, yeah, it is, it's, 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 uh, you're, you're placing a restriction upon property that is outside the city limits, you know? I own that property, I'm not a resident of the city, I don't have a vote, those are all legitimate points. Uh, but if, if how I use my property is, is so important to the city, then, you know, the city has two web, two, two tools, I'm sorry, two tools. One is extraterritorial regulation, where all, all of regulating is what the use of development of my land, but I'm not part of the city's tax base, I'm not paying property taxes, I'm not subject to the city's laws other than zoning regulations. So that's one tool. The other tool is annexation. And that is, that burns the barn down, right? I mean, that just, you know, gets, gets an immediate response. You can go anywhere in the state and, and that's, uh, there's, there's fallout, fallout, pushback, uh, whatever you want to call it. Let me get back to, 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 uh, to my notes here. If you look at, uh, and I just threw this in. Again, you, I realize, I respect the fact you guys have just gone through the planning process, the comp planning process. I put some excerpts from, uh, Lawrence and Douglas County's comprehensive plan, and there are a few pages, pages one through four, and also some, uh, language on the city of Precordia plan, uh, comprehensive plan, the language that I liked. I imagine you have something comparable to all that. At pages four through six of the handout, uh, note some of the state statutory provisions with respect to comprehensive plan. Again, there's no mandate that you do a plan, but if you do a plan, then the state sets out certain, certain requirements. Like, you could have a plan, you could have a planning commission, okay? It's kind of planning one-on-one. Uh, but, and, and the, and the state law talks about some of the components that should be in a comprehensive plan. Uh, and it's not limited just to land use, that's all I want to talk about tonight, but, but you have housing, you have the economic, uh, the economics of the city, you've got social services, you've got emergency services, uh, you've got water, gas, electricity. You know, what's, what's the infrastructure? What are the streets like? All that. And I would imagine, Josh, your new plan touches all those bases, right? Okay. But the, the comp plan doesn't tell you, uh, it, it, it provides a basic framework, but it doesn't tell you, uh, what has to go into the plan or how you, you know, what, where you put your emphasis. But you, you should touch on the, on, on those basic elements or components that are listed in statute. On page five, um, you've got.
Oh, I should note, when I printed this out, the page numbers are going to all be plus one from what you have.
Okay.
Because page one started on the table of contents instead of where I wanted it to.
So you didn't adjust any of the wording, did you?
I, no, I just adjusted the one.
Well, then on page six then, on page six is a reference to the future land use map. And, and Josh, you have a future land use map, you've had one in the past, you've got one in this new plan, right? Significance of the future land use map is, uh, in terms of value to the public, uh, you know, it may be the most interesting thing in, in the plan for a member of the public, because they say, okay, here's my property, I'm at one twenty-three Elm Street, you know? What does it show on the future land use map? Does it show that I'm going to continue, my neighborhood is going to continue over time to be residential? Or does it say, well, gee, we're looking at this and think, you know, over the lifetime of the plan, that, uh, that my block, my whole neighborhood is going to transition into commercial? And so my, my house, my house and my neighbor's house shows up on the future land use map as being commercial. So what's the significance of that? You know, I will, I might get alarmed by that, but I give Josh a phone call, he explains to me that it's not zoning, it's just the, it's a projection for what the future is going to look like. But the legal significance of the future land use map is if, if I have that house at one twenty-three Elm Street, and I want a rezoning to commercial, and the future land use map says, yeah, one twenty-three Elm Street is going to be commercial. And so it goes forward, and my rezoning application gets a recommendation from you guys, and, and the city commission approves the rezoning, then by operation of the law in Kansas, that rezoning decision has a statutory presumption of reasonableness, which is important if somebody challenges that rezoning as, as the reasonableness of the rezoning. It, it makes it, it adds a little extra layer of credibility where, where the final decision by the city is consistent with what the future land use map says. Last thing about comprehensive plan, uh, pages five, page of six is still, I guess. And, and this is good news from my, from my perspective. Uh, in recent years, uh, the Kansas appellate courts have put greater emphasis upon comprehensive plans and the planning process. Uh, in years past, the courts would just look at it, when, when, when the subject of a, of a comprehensive plan came up, and since evidence cutting one way or the other in a, in a challenged zoning decision, the courts would just say, well, it's a plan. You know, it's a, just a plan, uh, and, and really, uh, not attach much significance to it. But now, there's, there's at least the start of a trend, I hope, uh, where the courts are saying, what the community, what the comprehensive plan is, it's a, it's an expression of what the public's interest is, okay? I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm going to beat on this a little bit here, because one of the things that I, every planning commission I've ever dealt with struggles with, that I struggle with in my work as a planning commission, is what is the public interest? And you sit there and say, well, ten people are for this, and fifteen people are against it, you know? Is that an expression of public interest? Well, maybe it's, maybe it's sort of, but the single best source of, 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 of what constitutes the public interest in, in Arc City is the Arc City Comprehensive Plan, okay? And, and I know that when you do staff reports, Josh sent me a couple of staff reports, uh, that you always make reference to the comprehensive plan, you know, in a rezoning, okay? As part of the staff report, you'll identify what the comprehensive plan says about that, about my piece of property, you know? And that, and that's really important, it's that linkage between the comp plan and the actual land use decision. It keeps the comp plan alive, and hopefully keeps the comp plan, uh, relevant, uh, you know, over time. But it, 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 it helps to, uh, but the courts are saying, don't just put the comp plan up on the shelf and ignore it. You know, like, it's a, it's a necessary task that you've done, and now you're done with it, forget about it. They're really saying that it, it, it's an expression of what the public interest is as to how land should be used and developed over time. Now, it's also an invitation to beef up what's in the comp plan, you know, to make it as strong as possible. For example, if, 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 if housing is an issue in a community, and it is, okay, it is everywhere. Uh, and, and say like, uh, a little more detail, let's say like the, the range, the, the, the type of housing that's available, single-family versus multifamily, that there's a real, uh, absence or lack of, of, of multifamily housing. Everything from duplexes on up to apartment houses. Let's say that's a finding in the, in the comprehensive plan, uh, which would be a pretty common finding anymore, okay? You take that information, if it's, if it is seen as being a critical matter for the city, you state as strongly as possible the need to have more multifamily housing in the community. And, and, and you, you, you map on your future land use map larger areas, uh, that, that, that are going to transition or should transition into multifamily. Uh, and, and then when I come before you and ask for rezoning of my single-family property to multifamily, you know, I'm, I'm going to point to language in the comp plan, and so is Josh, and remind you that that is consistent with the community's values as evidenced by the comprehensive plan. The comp plan says that there should be more multifamily housing, so that's, that's an argument that I bring to the table when I'm asking for my rezoning. Similar things with, if, uh, if, if aesthetics, if buffering, screening, landscaping is an important value for the community as expressed in the comprehensive plan, then would you impose those on me, uh, by the land use regulations you adopt that are consistent with those values expressed in the comprehensive plan? You know, I'm, I'm at, I'm at a disadvantage now to challenge those, those, uh, those landscaping standards, assuming they're reasonable. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's more difficult for me to successfully challenge those, uh, in front of the city commission or in front of a court if, if they relate back to, if they have a foundation in the comprehensive plan. So, so again, I'm, I'm not speaking to what's, what's in your comp plan right now, I haven't seen it. Uh, but I've just urged you over time, I tell you, any comp plan, any city adopts in this state can be strengthened if there's the will to do so, you know, if, it's, 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 it's the now, it's a good opportunity to, to put as strong a voice as possible into the comp plan where you can accurately reflect, truthfully reflect upon the values of the community. Okay? Beat that point to death. You have an annual review process, uh, by state law. As noted in the, in the handout, uh, one of the few things that the state does mandate, it says that you're going to have a, uh, an annual review of the comprehensive plan and, by the planning commission. And then you review the plan and advise the city commission of the need for any amendments or revisions to the comp plan. That's, that's been in the law for a long time, uh, it's not always observed, but you've got a brand-new plan, you know, this time next year, or at some point in, in, in twenty twenty-four, you want to have it as an agenda item, the review of the comp plan. And what Josh should do, what will do is identify things that have happened over the course of the year where you've made decisions, uh, that might be at odds or not entirely consistent with the comp plan. Now, if that's, if that happens, then you need to revisit those parts of the comp plan and, and adjust them, you know, to be, to be consistent with what, what you've decided, uh, over the course of the year. Any questions? I don't, I spent more time than I met you on, on the, on the comp plans, are any, any questions about, about comprehensive plans or planning?
On, on number eight, on the Kansas Planning Statute, Kansas A twelve seven four one, it says, uh, again, while those cities required by state law that plan, and while it does provide that a city must have an adopted plan, it's to, uh, plan for areas outside of zone land and, and have a subdivision. But earlier you said that some cities don't have a.
Yeah.
A comprehensive plan, but they still.
And just to do zoning, you just do zoning, but like I said, if you, if you, uh, exercise any extraterritorial authority or even if you have subdivision regulations like the city does.
Okay.
Then the state law says you have to have a comp plan.
Okay.
Yeah. My hometown does not have a comprehensive plan, but they, they have zoning.
I was thinking they could just zone anywhere, like, like the extra, so extraterritorial doesn't apply with a comp plan?
Well, uh, you, you would have to have a comp plan that would speak to.
Territorial zoning, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but what happens where you have, and I would assume that there's no, uh, well, I don't, did you, is the comp plan extend beyond the, the boundaries of the city?
Or subdivision regulations in.
Okay. State law, interesting, you, you could legally, you, your plan could plan for the entirety of the unincorporated area of the county. You know, you can go, you can go way to the far, the far corners of the, of the county, and Winfield could do the same thing. Any city in the county that has, has, engages land use regulation could have a plan, so they could have overlapping plans, you know? Does that happen? Well, probably not often, but, but, uh, if, 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 if there is a, if the comp plan does project what's going to happen off the city's boundaries and plan for that, plan for the development beyond the city's boundaries, maybe even just a, you know, a quarter mile strip of land, so, you know, in some direction. Then that, uh, you know, it makes it more logical or helps to, uh, with, with, if, if an annexation were to follow from that, the annexation in here, if an annexation were to follow from that, then you've got a leg up in terms of what the proper zoning of that annexed property should be. You know, if, if you've planned for it, say this is going to be, this is planned for a future residential area, and I, and I own that property, and I come to the city and I say I want to be annexed in, uh, in order to get city water and city sewer. And, uh, I'm going to transition from the unincorporated to the area to the city, and I'm going to get zoning that's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
How? I have a lot of heartburn with government.
It's that Oklahoma stuff, you need to, you need to purge that from your system.
Yeah, I got, we got a surplus down there. But seriously, um, how much training do elected officials, once they win by one vote or a hundred that election, how much training do they get on this?
I, it's, it's, usually it's a task that falls on city staff. You know, like, like I mentioned before, the League of Municipalities, you know, they have a governing body workshops, and they touch on land use regulation, planning, uh, but, you know, along with a dozen other topics, you know, tax authority, police power, you know, uh, all the other stuff, streets, the sidewalks. But it's, it's, short answer is, there, there is training available.
None required.
You can take a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. That's, my point is I've come to this body with a background in emergency planning, not land use. And we write really good plans, and along comes a mayor and says, we're not going to do that. And along comes a mayor and says, we're not going to do that. And then you have a Katrina as a result of that. I have heartburn a lot when that kind of stuff happens.
Well, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I really don't.
That's okay. Because I liken, I make akin to my experience in emergency plans to this. And when we were, while we were reviewing the comprehensive plan, I heard it on several occasions, not just one meeting, but several occasions. We haven't reviewed this in so long. And we've actually had things in the plan that the commission said, we're not going to do. So planning for emergencies and planning for land use, I see as cousins because the elected officials don't choose to follow our guidance after we say it there.
Well, the, let's say that the comp plan has language in it that you want to see and it does get adopted, you know, along with everything else as part of the adopted plan. That doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Right.
I mean, that's where.
And my answer to that is, my purpose for being here is a CYA, cover your anatomy. That's, and what I'm going to do for this, this body is what a prudent man would do, given the information, given the task. And if the city commission or the county commission chooses not to follow the guidance, I can go home tonight and sleep and get up in the morning, look in the mirror and say, I did what I was supposed to do.
Well, you know, I could say something flip like, you know, stay in your lane, you know? But, you know, I deal with that. You know, I, we make decisions on my planning commission that get undone by the city council from time to time. We don't have a, we don't have a perfect track record, okay? We, and sometimes it's hard to identify where, why the different outcome, you know? But more often than not, if, in a community where the planning commission is well-respected by the governing body, you know, that follows from that is, you know, is, is better. Sorry. You've got more credibility, greater input. You're still not the final decision makers, but, but again, I've worked with cities where the planning commission might be a group that assembles three times a year, okay? And it's always difficult to come up with a quorum. There's always a number of vacancies because people in the community are just not interested in sitting on the board. Okay, well, so now you've got a city council taking a recommendation from this group of folks. They are the planning commission, they perform a statutory function, but they're really not engaged, just because it's, you know, it's intermittent. You know, they meet when there's, when there's a need, when there's somebody wants to have a rezoning or somebody wants to put a plat in. And so they only meet a few times a year and they don't engage in planning. You know, they're just dealing with this piecemeal planning that is in form of a rezoning or subdivision plat. And I guess one of the points I would make, I wanted to make, you're about the planning is, I would encourage you, notwithstanding you've just been through the comprehensive plan process, but don't, don't stop planning just because you've done the comprehensive plan. Your job isn't just rezonings and conditional use permits and subdivision plats. That's all important stuff, but it's not really planning. So every opportunity you have to plan for the community, you ought to do it. And we may.
We had those discussions. It was a fluid document that we would continually add or take away as this, as we saw what was best for the citizens, you know? Technology in times change, so.
Right, and I have a healthy respect for planning. Even though the plan is adopted and not used, still yet, my favoritism in the top ten is if you aim at nothing, that's what you get every time.
And each commission can change.
That's my point to the next guy gets elected. How much does he understand what he'd been elected to do?
A new commissioner, particularly one that hasn't been a commissioner before, really doesn't know anything about it. And the city provides the training opportunity. I went twice to League of Cities. I went up there twice, spent a few days each time going to conferences. I wanted to know as much as possible. Most commissioners do not, do they? They don't read their packets, they don't, but they'll, but they'll weigh heavily on the recommendation of the board.
Right.
So, but each commission can change. You might do something one and the very next commission vetoes all.
It doesn't take an election. They change their mind daily.
Totally upend when I was there. So it can change.
Every two years you've got new commissioners and they can change everything. We both.
I've got to move through here. I'm sorry, but I got, I got to keep moving here.
You want to hold our comments to the end or?
No, keep at it.
All right.
What do you?
You asked for it, so.
Is there a question?
No, I was just asking, would you prefer that we hold our comments toward the end?
I said, it's a self-inflicted wound.
Okay, then I said, well, you asked for it, so. I know you're trying to move on, but you kind of, you asked for the comments.
Well, I will move on here a little bit, okay? The, have you had folks come up and actually, like members of the community at public hearing or any of your meetings just come up flat out, say, you don't have the authority? Where's it written that you have the authority to pass zoning?
No, I mean, since I've been here, which is, I think this is my second year, we haven't had any real significant conflicts. I mean, sometimes they come in here a little confused about what exactly we're changing or how the zoning is going to affect them. And once we clear it up, they seem very reasonable.
Well, one of the, we made a determined effort and I'm sure it could be improved upon, but the regulations that you got, the zoning regulations you have, we put in great detail, considerable detail, the process, you know? And you don't see that necessarily in all zoning regulations. And people are a little bit at a loss of what, how does this all work? You say, okay, here's the rules, but how do I know what's being, how you guys make your decision? How it passes from Josh to you guys and on to the city commission? But the regulations you've got right now do that. They tell, they explain to the public how the process works. And I think on your website, you've also got some instructive information.
Yeah, I have, I developed something that I call the Development Guide. And it has, it goes beyond just zoning. It's actually telling people when they're supposed to pull a permit, what inspections are required, so those kinds of things are also added into it. So we strive really hard to get as much information to the public before they even show up at my office. And if they're receptive enough, I'm going to be explaining all of that to at least the applicant before they ever come here. Now, members of the public, that's a little more difficult because they don't always talk to me before they come here.
Only heartburn, as a newbie, has been citizens come and want a variance and then they don't show up to the hearing that they asked for variance. I can't justify giving somebody something if they don't care enough to show up. So, and then they don't get the variance and they throw a conniption and go up to commissioners and the commissioner give them the variance. That's not hard, folks. I understand government, but the citizen didn't study civics in tenth grade, I guess.
Well, we would talk about what the, you guys sit as the Board of Zoning Appeals as well as the planning commission?
Yeah, everybody here, the two people that are not on the Board of Zoning Appeals are actually not here tonight. So everybody here, including him, are part of the board.
Well, and you'll see in the handout and the heading of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I don't want to, I don't want to raise a ruckus here, but what you said is interesting about going from the, from the BZA to the, to the governing body, because appeals for the BZA go to district court by operation of state law.
Yep.
So.
My point, though, is when they ask us for a decision, then they don't show up. They ask him, he puts it on the agenda, and then they never even show up to support, give us a reason for supporting that.
Well, you know, hopefully that's just a matter of miscommunication or lack of communication. But the law doesn't, the regulations don't require somebody to show up. But I understand what you're saying, that, you know, if it's.
Well, in the particular meeting that we were at, the applicant didn't show up and all the neighbors did. I can't, I can't give an applicant something that the neighbor won't.
Well, the importance, I mean, just to narrow it down a little bit, the importance, the basic importance of the applicant being present is to respond to what other folks are saying. So, you know, if I've got a, if I don't show up, because for whatever reason, I don't want to face my neighbors or I think it's a slam dunk, so I don't show up. And the neighbors come in and everything they're saying is undisputed. You know, so I don't get my variance.
Right.
And had I been there, I could have said, no, that's not correct. You know, Mr. Jones, that's, that's not, that's not true. And you'd have more of a balance, you've got balanced information and you can make a call at that point.
I mean, that's really up to the governing bodies to decide whose statement is more valid, the planning, the zoning, or the BZA, or the.
Again, appeals from the BZA, if it's a variance or appeal of the zoning determination or an exception, those, by state law, those go to the, appeals from your decision as the BZA go to district court.
But the case that he was talking about was actually a rezoning.
About what?
The case that Lloyd was talking about was actually a rezone.
So if we appeal the governing body's decision, that goes to court? Is that what you?
No, no, just when you're sitting as a BZA. I'm sorry. When you're, when you're sitting as a BZA, you have three, three types of actions you can take. You can consider appeals. You know, I, I go to Josh and he's told me that, well, here's the way the regs apply to my property or what I want to do, and I think he's wrong. I think he's reading the regulations wrong, so I appeal to the BZA from his determination, that's one thing. Second thing is the granting of variances that the BZA handles variances, approve or disapprove the variance. And if I take issue, you deny my various requests, I don't go to the city commission, I go to the district court.
Okay, so what they're doing is actually illegal then?
I'm not going to say that because I don't know the whole story.
If that ever happened.
Because I see what he's saying is they're, they're going around the BZA and straight to the governing body.
Well, I've seen some cities, and this is.
We give our recommendation and then the applicant comes in to, you know, to oppose that or attest to our decision.
I know of a couple of cities, we're talking about a variance. I want to, I want to have my side yard reduced from eight feet to six feet. Okay, so I want a variance for my property.
Yeah, we're, you know.
We've done some variances, but we have not actually had that happen, where somebody went around and they disagreed with the decision of the board and went to the city commission. I have not experienced that since I've been doing this, we've actually done that. Now, with some of the other things like rezonings, that happens, though they'll try to remake their case before the city commission. That's, that's actually not necessarily wrong. But that has happened a number of times where they tried to convince, including the comprehensive plan, when we were talking about the zoning. That's where the comments came, was at the city commission level, not at the planning commission level. Because they found out about it after the fact and showed up to the city commission.
Well, again, it's part of the, the process allows this. You don't, you don't have the final say, even though you might do the most work on a particular project, okay? But on my rezoning request, the planning commission and Josh, you guys do 90% or 95% of the work, you know, in terms of collecting information, analyzing, synthesizing it and spewing out recommendations. And it goes to the city commission. And they have, by law, they have the final say. They make the decision and you may disagree with it fundamentally, you know? But the fact of the matter is they have, they have by law, final word on it, okay? And are you entitled to an explanation as to why, you know? You know, you could ask for it, you know? Look at the minutes and so on and trying to identify and ask Josh, you know, why did they go? You could attend the meeting, you know, and see for yourself. But the reality is they have the final say. Now, let's talk, let's talk about this for a minute, okay? Because it's also in the handout. And Josh, I think in the, I think in the regulations that we have, most of the time, most of the time, most of the regulations I've drafted over the years where the city has, actually has a honest to God planning staff, you know, in a planning office, and that's not the case everywhere. Lots of times it's a city clerk or the city superintendent or somebody else. Wears the hat of the zoning administrator, but where you've got a, an established zoning office and a tradition of having, having a zoning administrator. Where that happens, I have recommended that the work product of the planning commission on a rezoning, that the recommendation of the planning commission goes to the city governing body, city council, city commission, whatever. And the action by the city governing body is on the record. They don't hold a new hearing, they don't take a new testimony, nothing. If they don't, if they think the record is incomplete, you know, if they sit there and reading through it and they query Josh about it, said, you know, did the planning commission consider this issue, consider that issue? If they don't think you did a good job or good enough job, they have the ability to send it back to you with instructions to say, take another look at this issue. We don't think you took into account the trial.
We've had it happen in the last year when that happened.
But that's a cleaner process to me than, than taking another hearing, opening it up to a hearing where maybe I'm getting new information or information that's contrary to what you all heard at the public hearing, and now I'm going to base my decision on there. When that situation develops, you've got to disconnect between the city governing body and the planning commission. And you also, another reason why it's, that's, I think, not the desired approach is I'm interested in this proposal, my neighbor's rezoning. Okay, I'm curious about it. And I'm generally opposed to it because he wants to put, he wants to put a shop. He wants to put a gas station here, you know, knock down his house and put a gas station in. I don't like that. I think that's going to be adverse to me. So I go to the planning commission meeting, I go to the public hearing, okay? It's noticed up and I'm an adjoining property owner, so I actually got actual notice. There's a public hearing going on. So I get up, I get up and I listen to everything that's been said and I make my speech, you know, against the rezoning. And now, you know, I think that I've heard everything that's been said and I've read all the material that's submitted to you guys. And I hear your discussion and I hear your decision to deny, your recommendation to deny the rezoning. Okay, now I feel pretty good. I feel like I prevailed, my neighbors prevailed. The rezoning is going to happen based on all the information provided. And what I don't understand and don't figure out is that you guys are just making a recommendation, even though the motion that I hear you make is that you, there's a motion to disapprove or deny the rezoning by the city commission, okay? So now I miss the. So now I miss the meeting of the city commission. And at the city commission level, new information comes out. It's not limited to just what's on the record that was created at the public hearing. It's, you know, my, my neighbor wanting the gas station, brings, makes a new argument, brings in new evidence, and puts it before the city commission. So the city commission is sitting there, saying, well, we've got this information here, we've got this information from the planning commission. We don't think the planning commission dealt with this issue that we're now hearing about, so we're going to go ahead and prove the rezoning. Okay? Now, I've been whipsawed here, as a, as a member of the public, you know, as the neighbor, because I thought everything was coming out at the planning commission, at the public hearing, that this is what, what the arguments were going to be, this is what the evidence was.
I think we, we do a pretty good job at clarifying that.
Because we. That you're just making a recommendation.
Yes, because we get that, that question a lot. You know, did you guys decide this? You guys decided, it's like, no, we didn't decide anything, we were just an advisory board. I think the last meeting, I tend, we said it two or three times, just.
What, what do you think, when somebody says, well, will the city commission have here new evidence? Will they take additional testimony? What's your response to that?
I haven't had anyone ask me that, but my response would be, yes, I'm sure they would.
Generally.
Is that the correct response, or what's the correct response?
Well, I, I'm not sure what the reality is. I mean, Josh, I guess you know, if, if, if I want to, by rezoning for my gas station, I got thumbs down from the planning commission, I got thumbs down from you. Okay? And the, the folks at the public hearing, so everybody who's against my rezoning. But I can bring in, if I can bring in new people, you know, that, that say this is a great idea, and I can introduce new evidence about why this would be a, a good land use. If, if I could do all that, then I kind of, you know, I undercut the planning commission, and, and the role you play. Because you, you weren't, you didn't have this information available to you, when you were making your decision.
That, that would be up to the commissioners, though, to, to make that realization.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
But they would need somebody from, that's why we were talking about having a representative there, or at least the staff there, to say, well, you know, we weren't presented this evidence when we made our decision.
Well, e- even in a situation where not, if, I, I present new evidence to the city commission. And Josh notes that for the city commissioner, said, well, the planning commission didn't hear this. What, what the city commission, I'm overstepping my lines here, but what, what I would do as a city commissioner at that point, is say, well, then this needs to go back to the planning commission, to hear this testimony, or hear this evidence.
That's what I would encourage them, as a staff member, I'm going to say.
Yeah. As long as, but the planning, or the commissioners need to be aware that there was additional information before they make their decision. So that would be up to staff, or the chair from the planning, or the zoning.
I'll give you an instance of what, what the city of Topeka does, okay? By regulation, the review of the planning commission recommendation, and, and the review, the review of the, the consideration of the rezoning is based entirely upon the record from the planning commission. Okay? There's no new testimony taken. The staff makes the report, and, and the, and the city council sits there, they have the recommendation of the planning commission, and, and the staff report. And if they think something's missing, if they think, well, they, they didn't take into account, they didn't have, they didn't do a traffic study, you know, for this proposed gas station here. And I, I can see from the minutes that people were concerned about the, about the traffic, but there wasn't a traffic study done. We think, we think the, the planning commission should take another look at the traffic impacts. And so they remand it back to the planning commission. So you guys can do your job based on an input from the.
I think what he's saying is that, that's not what happened. That's why he has the heartburn about it. Because we were kind of undercut, or, like you said, I might be overstepping my boundaries here. But I think he feels like maybe we were undercut by the commissioners.
Well, I.
We weren't allowed to do our job. And there was another incidence where that occurred as well. And citizens come, you know, ask us a lot of questions, and have information going on a certain situation.
If, it, it is the, the city commission, it's their call as to whether or not they want to take additional information. My view.
But I have read in here that, that the court weighs heavily on the, on the comprehensive plan. So if this commissioner's decision goes against the comprehensive plan.
Well, even though the, you know, the handout talks about how the, the courts are giving more respect to the comprehensive plan, but still, it's, the case law that's out there says that when a city acts contrary to the comprehensive plan, when you put a, when you put a business park here, where it says it's going to be a, a, a single-family residential subdivision, what the courts have said for many years, and still good law, is that the city's action has now amended the comprehensive plan. Okay? That the future land use map is now been indirectly amended, because the decision to rezon this property was, was made.
So if, if you're an applicant, and you apply for a rezoning, or, or what, what a variance, and you take it to the planning commission, and they deny it, or they don't agree with it, and then the commissioners shoot it down as well. Is there another step after that, that a, that a applicant could take to overturn that decision?
There's a step between planning commission and the city commission, so there's, there's two answers to that. You, you have the protest period, okay? And, and you probably have had some protest petitions over the years, maybe?
I haven't really had that prevented, but we purposely delay when it leaves this body until it goes to that body, that fourteen-day period that they're required.
Yeah, and this is, this is in your regulations, and it's, it is, and it's exactly what the state law says. Let me go back to the illustration. I have my proposed rezoning of my house, my single-family dwelling, R1 zone property, to C3 for, for a, a gas station. Okay? So I, I come in, and, and, and you guys turn me down. You, you make a recommendation of denial of my rezoning. People in the audience out here, I think, well, that's, the battle's over here. Okay? You know, they don't, maybe they, they hear you say that it's just a recommendation, but, but, you know, they, they kind of think it's, it's, everything was, was very heavily against me. So, you know, obviously, the rezoning can be turned down. What they should do, as, as kind of a belt to suspenders, is they can file a protest petition. Even though the recommendation of the planning commission was against my rezoning, they could still file a protest petition that would then require a supermajority vote of the city commission in order to reverse and, and approve the, the recommendation, or, or reverse the recommendation of the planning commission and approve my rezoning. Again, it's kind of belts and suspenders, but it's, it could be a very significant step by opponents to my rezoning. Even though the recommendation from the planning commission was to deny, you still, the protest petition, you're not protesting the planning commission's recommendation, you're protesting my application for rezoning. So, and, and people often forget this, you know, that, that's a step that can be taken. And if, if, if the protest petition is sufficient, it triggers a three-fourth majority vote on the city commission in order to approve the rezoning. And that three-fourths, was it, how many people are there, five of the planning, of the city?
Supermajorities.
So you got to have four out of five, you know, in order to approve my rezon.
We actually have it written in ours, though, that if the city commission disagrees with the planning commission, that that supermajority applies anyways, even without the protest petition.
The four-fifth? Really? Okay, okay.
So usually, what they'll do if they disagree, is that, that's when they send it back.
Okay.
Because it's, that's going to be really difficult, in most cases, because you're going to have one or two that's like, wait a minute, the planning commission's on this.
Well, the state law's standard, which, which you, it could be more, you could do what you talked about there, is, is two-thirds majority vote, which would be.
I can't remember which it is.
Two-thirds majority vote is, that's sixty-six percent, and three out of five is sixty percent.
So it's still the same thing?
Still the same.
For our governing body's size.
Yeah.
That's, that's what, that's what.
Yeah. Okay, I got you. Yeah, with a five-member body, yeah. With a five-member body, yeah, but still, you know, the, the protest petition is still a, a pretty powerful tool. And, and it's, maybe thankfully, it's underutilized by people, you know, because there's, there's nothing rational about the, the protest petition. I don't have to have a reason to protest, to protest against the, the, the application. I just, I just oppose it. And we oppose it because I hate the guy that, you know, that wants to have the rezoning.
Golf, sorry.
Yeah.
So what's the second, what's the second option? So there was two.
Oh, to go to court.
Okay.
Because of course, challenge, challenge the reasonableness with the legality of the, of the action, the decision was made. Spend a little bit of time, I'm, I'm going to jump around the lot here. Take a look at, should be pages fifteen and sixteen of the handout. When you guys, when you're adopting the comprehensive plan, recommending adoption of it, or when you're doing a text amendment to the regulations, I think your, your text amendment is that you're going to increase lot sizes from, minimum lot sizes from three thousand feet to five thousand, or from eight thousand feet to ten thousand feet in a, in a zoning class. It's a text amendment. When you do that, you're acting in a legislative capacity. And that means you're just, you're acting like legislators, you're, you're making laws, okay? But when you handle a rezoning, or a conditional use amendment, where you're dealing with my property, site-specific property, my property, the courts have said that you're acting as judges, because you're applying the law to my property, not somebody else's property, my property, site-specific. And your regulations are consistent with this. You, you, what, what the law actually calls you, it refers to the process as quasi-judicial. You're quasi-judicial, you're more court-like, judge-like than anything else, okay? So that's a, that's a, a nice feather in your cap, right, you're, you're judges. The consequence of being in a quasi-judicial capacity is that you're held to a higher standard for your decision. When you're acting in a legis, legislative capacity, forgive me for saying it, but when you're acting in legislative capacity, the reasonableness of your decision does, doesn't count. You know, you could be making a stupid decision, like they do in Topeka, okay? And, and it's not a legal issue, you know, that, that you don't make a sound decision, a wise decision, is not, is not a basis to challenge the decision. Okay? Going back to my example about changing the lot size, you make a text amendment to, to increase the lot size, minimum lot size. You know, maybe that's a stupid decision, but that's not an argument for legal, for the legality of it, okay? But when you deny my rezoning, you are held to a standard of reasonableness in that decision. And what is reasonableness in your own regulations, and in the handout, you have these factors, these reasonableness factors, that the court, in a nineteen, the Kansas Supreme Court in a nineteen seventy-five decision said, these are factors you need to take a look at to arrive at a reasonable decision. Okay? And it's things like conformance with the comprehensive plan, the recommendation of planning staff, the effect upon the, of, of the rezoning upon adjoining properties of land, how long my property has remained vacant. You know, and what is the public, the public benefit that that would come from approving the rezoning, or versus denying the rezoning? Take, take a look at those factors. You're, you're going to see them, like, in every staff report that Josh gives you. He goes through those, those criteria, those golden factors, and offers his analysis, his, his determination as to whether or not those factors weigh in favor of or against my proposed rezon. Okay? So the court, the courts have given you some guidance as to what questions you want to ask, what considerations you should make when you're thinking about my application for rezoning. Your own regulations set these out. And it's pretty, it's pretty compatible, I think, right down the line. You, you've got a few more factors, I think, than.
Basically, what you see in paragraph number four is in our, it may not be word for word, but it's in our regulations, too.
Yeah. So, so that's, that's important guidance. And having a record that shows that the planning commission considered those factors is really important in having a defensible decision by, recommendation by the planning commission, and then the city commission is supposed to be doing the same thing, taking a look at the same factors, or taking a look at how you looked at those factors when they make their final decision, okay? A complication of sorts is that nobody can tell you how much importance to give to any one of those factors. Okay? And nobody says that the planning commission, no law says that the planning commission has to reach a consensus as to the weight to give to any one factor. So any one of you could think that factor number three is all-important, is more important than any of the other factors, and another one of you might say, well, I think factor number five is the one that's critical importance, and, and outweighs all the other factors. And that's okay. Okay, that's okay. The, the idea is you have a process where you're all considering the same factors, but you don't have to arrive at the same conclusion as to what factor is most important, and what, which ones deserve a lot of weight, and which ones don't. And somehow or other, the process still works, okay? If Josh gives you a staff report, and he makes a recommendation, or makes a finding, a proposed finding, it is staff report, and, and you disagree with it, what, what do you do? Okay, and that's a question, I mean, because I.
Oh, what do we do? We tell Josh he's wrong?
Well, as a situation ever, when, when you sit there, and I got.
Yeah, we disagree with him. I mean, we, we talk about how we came up with his conclusion, and why we disagree, and discuss the issue.
So, some of the factors are pretty straightforward, like the length of time property has remained, remained vacant or undeveloped, and so that's, you know, you can't quarrel with that, okay? Hopefully. I mean, that's, that's, there's, there's, it's hard information, it's a fact. But the one about the suitability of the applicant's property for uses to which it has been restricted. I mean, you might, I mean, Josh might make a, a finding that, that, you know, that the, that the property as zoned today is a mismatch.
Yeah, we, we had pretty much an occurrence that was exactly what you're talking about, or pretty close. Where we disagreed with staff, staff's decision, and we made a separate recommendation. And I think we ultimately came to kind of a middle ground there.
So on that, you know, you know, when you make a, when you have a difference of opinion with staff over the factor number six, the suitability of the applicant's property for the uses to which it has been restricted, and you guys kick it around, and you say, well, Josh, we disagree with that. Do you actually make a separate finding, a different finding, or is that just part of the minutes? How, how is that, if I'm the?
In the past, it's really just been in the minutes. This last couple of them, I've tried to. This last couple of them, I've tried to put in, like, I have one statement in there on the staff report that says any additional comment the planning commission might have. And I've been putting that in that statement before I submit it to the city commission.
So what, which opinion went to the city commission, the planning commission or yours?
What I do is I present that staff report as I originally did it. But then I report that this planning commission has made this decision. So I'm going to, I'm going to attempt to make the planning commission decision way more than my decision as I make that presentation.
Say that again, your what?
I'm going to make the planning commission recommendation have more weight than my original recommendation. Usually that's the way I present it. Unless there's some really big reason that I totally disagreed with the finding, but I'm probably going to tell you.
Well, have you guys ever overturned or acted contrary to the recommendation staff?
Yes.
Bottom line. Okay, okay. So I'm sitting here of the city commission and I get this, now I've got your recommendation. Josh said deny, you guys recommend approval. How do I separate out, how do I understand the thinking of the planning commission as opposed to staff? I've got the staff report, so I see exactly what Josh's thinking was and how he analyzed the the golden factors and, you know, the determination of reasonableness, I see that. But how do I know why you guys part of company? And why, what findings you made or what conclusions you reached under the golden factors that were strong enough to overturn or be contrary to the recommendation of staff?
I don't think we've had that deep of a discussion. I wasn't aware of the golden factors today, but we've had similar, maybe they didn't necessarily fall specifically under one of these particular criteria, but we definitely explained our reasoning as to why we opposed his decision.
To Josh, just for the commission?
To Josh.
So if you remain in disagreement, wouldn't it then be important for you as the chair to attend that?
Yeah, yeah, that's why we, that's why we had.
That's why we're kind of changing.
Yeah, that's why we kind of came to the conclusion that it's important that the planning commission have a representative during the city commissioners' decisions, just to maybe as, as a show of support or the weight of our opposition. Just to kind of, you know, support our claims or whatever, whatever decision we decided as a, as a.
Let me ask you this, so when Josh prepares his staff report on my rezoning, my application for rezoning, he's got the information that I provided him. He takes a look at the regulations and the comp plan and his recommendation. And this example, his recommendation is to deny my rezoning, okay? And at the public hearing, I am really persuasive to you guys, okay? I, I take issue with the staff report. I say, well, I respectfully disagree on this point, this point, this point. And I lined up thirty people, you know, all my first cousins and everybody I can find to come in and talk about what a great guy I am and how this proposal would really be, be good. And some of the people actually have solid information, okay? And you guys now, you know, you're inclined to approve, recommend approval by rezoning. At that point, when you close the public hearing, do you give Josh an opportunity to, do you ask him whether he heard anything from the applicant or from the public hearing that causes him to change any of his recommendations?
I definitely think the, the applicant's testimony will influence his decision, you know.
But, but he's hearing it for the first time. I mean, he, he's like you guys, he's, he's hearing the public hearing, he's hearing, well, you know, maybe I'm telling him everything I've heard. He's already heard before, but maybe I've got some new stuff. And, and the public hearing is all new stuff. So now, I mean, I've seen, I've seen staff get hung out to dry on stuff like this where they, and they don't, they don't take the initiative to say, well, geez, on second thought here, or after hearing these comments from the public, you know, I'd like to change my recommendation or, you know. But I, I think it's, I think, and I don't know if you agree with this enough, Josh, but I think it's, it's a good idea just as a practice to just, because, because I do this at Topeka. At the end of the closing of the public hearing, if there's been a lot of discussion going on, a lot of information, I ask the staff, I say, you know, have you heard anything tonight from the applicant or the public hearing, people for it against the application? Have you heard anything that causes you to change your recommendation? Okay? And every time I've done.
I don't think we've asked that so much from the public, but we have asked. Are you, after hearing our decision, does that affect your decision? Or does that influence your, your recommendation to the commissioners?
I would just.
I think there's been good dialogue.
Yeah, we said it's been real good dialogue.
I would do that routinely, if you're not doing that already. I do that routinely and make sure it gets into the minutes, you know, so, you know, staff is able to say yes or no to that, that question.
And why?
We like Josh for the most part.
We're a small town.
Like I said, I've seen staff taking unnecessary hits because they come in with the recommendation one way or the other. And then there's this whole fruitful room.
Yeah, we've, we've seen.
They come in, you know, and.
And we, we, you know, support staff, you know, we don't.
As you should.
You know, marching to the gallows or anything like that, we definitely, you know, we, we take his recommendation, it carries as much weight as anybody else's. I mean, does anybody disagree with that?
I mean, I think it's a good idea, I hadn't really thought about it, is to say, hey, are you still, still good with your call?
Yeah. Give him enough.
And honestly, sometimes as part of that, it's just me talking directly to you. If there was something that you wanted me to specifically say to the city commission, that's a good test of that too.
Yeah.
However, that could also be accomplished by the planning commissioner saying that.
That's why, I mean, we want to change the policy as far as, as far as our representation to the commissioners. I want to make sure that, that there's no miscommunication between what we've decided and what staff recommends.
I actually really like the idea. I think that, if, if nothing else, it gives more weight to what I'm saying.
Because after, after it leaves this room, I don't, I mean, I don't know what happens after that. And that's me not doing my due diligence, so. Or, you know, us as a whole not conveying our, our decisions to the commissioners. Now, if we're both in agreement, or it's not a vital decision, or it's not a carries a lot of, a lot of importance, then, you know, I don't see that that would be necessary, but.
Take, take a look at the.
Him do his job.
Page eighteen of the handout, just for, for a second here.
Is that his page eighteen or yours?
Your page eighteen.
Eighteen, every time.
I'm, I'm adding a plus one. And that's just a, you know, laying out just a common procedure on a, to get a rezoning or a conditional use permit. Does that generally follow what you, how you guys handle it? When you go through, at the beginning of your, of your planning commission meeting, you identify conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, you've got a good set of bylaws. Josh sent those to me. I think you're sensitive to the ex parte communications and, and possible conflicts. So you, you hear the, the staff report, then you hear the applicant? And you, is that the order you go in or you hear from the applicant?
Usually he'll have a presentation and some visual aids. He'll, he'll do his presentation and then we'll, if we have public comments, let the public speak and then make our decision based off of input from the staff. Before we decide anything, we listen to it.
Do you, do you ask questions to staff after the staff report?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we definitely make sure that, you know, I want to make sure that the planning commission is very clear on what is being discussed.
Right.
And any lapses in clarification, and we, I think we've tabled stuff before, have had enough information.
Okay, but after the staff report and whatever questions you have, then you hear from the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so I can then ask me questions? And then you open it up to public hearing?
Yes, or actually the applicant will speak during the, the public hearing.
Okay, okay, so you open the public hearing and then the applicant is.
Yes. Yeah, we usually let them speak, I mean, usually we, we are aware that they, what they're, what they're here for and we allow them to make their case before any, before, I think they're usually the first ones to speak, the applicant, generally. So generally, the applicant will speak and then maybe a few public comments and then, and then staff make his recommendation.
And even before that, Josh sends out letters to the neighbors letting them know we're going to talk about this. And if you have interest, then show up.
And usually there's a lot of confusion at the beginning of the meeting. Then by the end of it, I think everybody's pretty clear and contained.
Confusion by members of the public?
Yeah, as to what the decision, how the decision was made or who makes the decision or who it affects or the, the details.
And when, so I, I beg my, after Josh gives his staff report, you ask me to, to step up. You open the public hearing and I step up and, and say whatever I want to say, and then you guys ask questions of me. And then ten people get up at the public hearing and bash me, okay? And at the end of that, do you give me an opportunity to respond to what?
Definitely, we, we, we let people talk, I mean, I think we're pretty liberal as far as that goes. Sometimes we have people, I mean, we, we do set a cutoff, but that's just to give everybody a chance to speak and then we'll go back around the room and let.
If you had occasion to put time limits on.
You even witnessed tonight, we left the other guy go longer than he.
Generally, you have like three, four, five minute time.
Yeah, yeah, we have a three minute time limit. Usually, you know, I want to make sure they get their point across, I'm not going to cut them off in the middle of.
The reason, the reason I ask you if you're going to give me a second chance here, you're going to.
Oh, yeah, we give everybody a chance to reply.
Not everybody does that.
Oh, yeah.
Like you said, one bite at the apple and, and I've, you know.
No, it's, it's an open discussion. There's no, we, the time limit is just to allow everyone to talk, basically. And if you've got more to say, we'll come back around after everybody has spoken. That's kind of.
It's probably more to cut somebody off that's completely in the weeds on something that we don't really need to be discussing any more than we already have for.
Or you repeated the same thing at five.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. I think the premise is we want everyone to be heard and everyone to have a chance to say what they, they need to say. It's in the context of, of the matter we're discussing.
Do you, when, when you guys make your recommendation, and before the room empties out, do you, I mean, you, you've said you, you've made it clear to members of the public that this is just a recommendation, that the final decision is made by the city commission. Do you also routinely tell people that there's an opportunity for a protest petition?
No, no, I mean, I honestly wasn't aware of that. I kind of, the, the things that I'm not knowledgeable of, I do refer to, to staff. He definitely has a lot more knowledge on, on these matters.
Well, it's kind of a delicate thing because sometimes, you know, when, when it's the planning commission makes, tells people that, it's like you're taking sides. You know, I mean, that's the way it can come across. It's another, what some cities do to avoid that is like on the agenda sheet, you might put a little note at the bottom, you know, where it says like the recommendations of the planning commission are recommendations only.
Yeah, we do clarify our recommendations.
But you'd also put a little one liner in there that said that, you know, the protest petitions can be made, can be made to the city commission on matters.
I think that's better than us saying it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll definitely make that clear next time.
I mean, you, you don't want to be pushing the idea, but, but I've, I've had people come before planning commission angry. You know, because they didn't avail themselves of that. They said, nobody told me, you know, nobody told me, nobody told me I could do a protest petition, you know?
Yeah. Now, whose responsibility is that? Is that, this, this is a lot of the discussion we have with the citizens. I mean, is it our responsibility to make you aware or is it?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Should you do your due diligence?
If you put one sentence thing in there, then that takes care of it, you know? People can't say, well, I didn't have any, I didn't know there was a protest petition. Well, read the agenda, it was right there in black and white, if they want more information, they'll corner Josh and say, you know, how do I do this? Because the city's got.
I think that would be the best way to, to, if you have a disgruntled citizen, then let, let him know that, hey, this is at the end of the, of the fight here, you still have.
Well, if you put it on the agenda or some document that everybody gets when they walk through the door, then you don't have to worry about making the announcement, you know, it's right there in black and white. Let me ask you something that every planning commission wrestles with. And we talked about it a little bit, I think, already about the public interest. How do you identify what's in the public interest?
Well, we, we've done a lot of surveys, tried to, and we haven't had, had very much luck, but I, I feel like this commission was selected with, with the with the intention of having the, the public's best interest or the, or what the, what the public wants in mind when we make decisions. And, and we, we've said that many a times, that we're here representing the public. We're not here with our own opinions and agendas, we're here to represent the, the public.
Yeah, that's the first, first step is to divorce yourself personally from them.
Yeah, we, we make that, I, I think we've made that pretty clear.
But when I've got, when I've got twenty people out here, all twenty people that show up for a public hearing, all are against my rezoning. Do those twenty people, at, at whatever arguments they make, whatever points they make, are they, the, do they, are they expressing the public interest?
Well, you have the mob, you know.
These are all about fearing tax pain.
But we also have to take into consideration the, the planning, the comprehensive plan and what's in the best interest of, of the entire city, not just these twenty angry people.
Okay, if you can, if you can stick with that.
Yeah, yeah, we try to do that, either that or we just, you know, we, we absolve ourselves, say, hey, go, you know, go talk to the commissioners and say, so sometimes we just cut and run, but usually.
Well, you know, there is, it's, and this isn't exactly profound, but, you know, and it's not something you necessarily tell folks, but what you hear at the public hearing, whether it's five people, twenty people, whatever it is, they may be making legitimate points, you know, as to what the public interest is. But they may be just expressing what their personal concerns.
Yeah, they, they, they may be frustrated and angry and not thinking rationally.
And when the guy stands up there and says, everybody that's, that agrees with me that this is a bad idea, stand up, you know, and they do that.
Yeah.
And then you guys, contrary to that, then, you know, you got people angry at the planning commission, right? So you're not listening to the public, you know, because the public that's here is here tonight.
Well, twenty people in, in my mind does not represent the entire public, I mean, there's.
Well, it's, it's always just a small sample, or nine times out of ten, it's a small sample of the public who is going to see a financial impact from that decision, and that's the only reason they're here.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, it's great that you guys can stick with that, but when I'm, when I'm a citizen here and everybody else in the room agrees with me that, you know, then it looks like you guys are thumbing your nose at, at public interest. I mean, that's, that's human.
Well, then we would have to go through these golden rules here or the comprehensive plan to justify our, our decision or to back up our, our final, you know, whatever we decide.
And you don't discount, I mean, don't, don't get yourself in a box where you're saying that you're ignoring what they say. what they say, because the law says that in the interests of neighbors and people in the immediate area around by rezoning, by proposed zoning, that you can give some weight to that, you can give some consideration of that, but you don't substitute that for what the larger public interest is, which is the entirety of the community, right?
I think we've been pretty good about sticking to our guns. I don't think we've been, like, necessarily swayed by any group of people, well, at least up to this point, I mean.
Again, without, without.
We get some big scary guys in here who might, you know, affect.
It, it's a tough line to walk, you know, where you, you, you're not dismissive of what people, people take the time to come in and say, "I talk."
And that's, that's another thing, is we say, "Hey, this is not a paid position, we are here voluntarily." We don't have to be here, we don't want to.
Does that, does that work?
I think, yeah, it does. I think, I think it helps, I don't know.
The commissioners haven't fired me yet.
Yeah, and I think we let them know that we, we are here as citizens, not as authority figures or anything. We're just represented up the.
That's when I sneak out the back door.
You're citizens, you're neighbors.
Yeah, exactly.
I was a small town.
Yeah, exactly.
I would imagine that any given meeting, you got somebody that's.
Well, luckily, we haven't had any. Luckily, we haven't had any real intense conflicts or nothing that wasn't kind of resolved by the end. I mean, we'll, we'll stay here all night till we resolve it, or at least I will, I don't know about it. I can't speak for everyone else, but I, I don't want to leave somebody's, uh, this squad over or somebody that, that, that's confused. You said that to the country or somewhere?
They're in the comprehensive, and they're actually in every staff report, written staff report. I don't always bow out or read through them all.
I think you, I think I recall you going through.
Yeah, when I first started doing this, I was reading everything on the page of my planning commission attempts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's. And so I learned what the important ones are really bringing good, but the staff report has all been.
You know, I keep telling, I keep inflicting on you what we do in Topeka. Um, you know, the, the staff reports you do is, is very comparable to, I mean, the layout, of course, I think it's always different, but what we do have, uh, as part of the staff report, go through each one of the golden factors, you know, and make the proposed findings. Uh, and, and again, you, you know, you sent those to me, uh, but what you just said, Josh, um, we don't, we don't get, I mean, it frustrates me a little bit, we don't get a shorthand version or summary from the staff at the time of the public hearings as to their findings on the golden factors. And I think it's important to do that, to, to touch on at least some of them, because of the folks out here.
Yeah, I think, I think Josh does a, a good job, kind of, of.
Well, we, we don't, we, we don't. Because I think, you know, you know, we have it, we have this report, it might be thirty, forty pages long, and we're sitting there reading through it, you know, some people are looking at it for their very first time, you know, uh, so looking at it, and, uh, the public doesn't see that.
Yeah.
They don't know what's, what's in there, and just, just in a cursory, you know, just in a couple minutes saying, you know, "I've reviewed, staff has reviewed the, the golden factors as required by state law and the city's zoning regulations, and, and here are some of the key findings, you know, that, that, that I've made with respect to those golden factors."
And I think, I think we do a good job questioning staff's decision too, or asking the right questions.
Good, good, keep, keep doing that, keep doing that, because it's, it sends a message to, uh,
Yeah.
you know, out here, and I, I've also dealt with it in some communities where people think that, uh, you know, the staff is running the show, and sometimes the staff is running the show.
Yeah.
And sometimes that's okay, but, but, you know, it, it sends a message out here that, you know, that the planning commission just does whatever the staff says, you don't want that.
Yeah.
You don't want that.
Yeah.
That's why every once in a while it's important to beat the staff down, you know what I'm saying? You know, disagree with them, just, just, just for the sport of it.
Just let them know who's.
No, you know, but, but make sure that, you know, and, anyway, uh, take a look at pages. Uh, is, is there anything else about the rezoning procedure? Yeah, I think you guys have a good handle, I'm gonna surprise, I'm impressed, seriously, on the, the way you responded to the public interest versus public concern thing, because everybody wrestles with it, and maybe you guys are ahead of the game in, in, in being able to, to, uh, to sort through.
I think if you come in with the attitude that you're a public servant and you leave your, um, you know, your, your biased opinions at the door, that, that's kind of what I do when I, when I come in, come in here. Um, I try to, uh, think about not what I want, or what's best for me, but what's best for my community.
Well, again, you know, if you guys can, you, you keep your perspective when you got a whole room full of people that are all uniform, you know, for or against something, and, and, I mean, that's, that's tough. It is, it is a tough, it's a tough thing, it's, but if you can keep that balance, then good for you.
I do that every day when somebody comes in and I have to explain to them why they can't do what they want to do. Makes it interesting, because there's sometimes when maybe I, maybe something's changed and the regulations aren't quite what I think they should be. I still have to go by what the regulations say until when I can bring it to you and explain why it's a problem.
Take, take a look at pages twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, or, and I'll hit this topic pretty quickly, but it's, it's kind of, it's an important one, uh, it's about the vesting of development rights. You guys approved my, my subdivision, okay? So I've got a, a planted subdivision that I went down to registered days and recorded it, and the final plat shows that all the lots are a third of an acre, okay? Um, and at some point, let's say, a couple years later, uh, after, you know, after I've recorded my plat, but before I've sold a single lot, haven't done anything, just, the land is out there, you know, ready to sell, but haven't sold anything, uh, you guys, um, at the governing body amend the zoning regulations to change the minimum, uh, lot size in my zoning district from a third of the acre, which I had, to a half acre, okay? Now, where am I at that point? Do I have to come back and correct my plats or go through the planning process in order to change from one-third to half acre? I, again, I got my plat approved by you guys and the city commission five years ago, but nothing's happened to my subdivision, now you've changed the rules, do I have to comply with the rules?
What Josh tell you?
So what, what Josh tell you?
Well, this is an easy example. Because I, I have a vested right.
Yeah.
Because I recorded my, my plat.
Yeah.
And under state law, I have ten years. That I, that my, 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 my development rights are vested for a ten-year period of time following the recording of the plat, so anything that happens, you know, during that ten-year period, any amendments that you make are not going to be, aren't, aren't going to be affecting me, okay? So I go forward, my, my third of an acre lots, uh, and the guy across the street puts a subdivision in, you know, but must look just like mine, but he's got to have half acre lots on there, okay? I'm vested, I have a vested right to develop my, my property, uh, under the rules that existed at the time that I recorded my flat, by, by operation of state law, that ten-year period of time. If I have a different, if something other than a, a residential subdivision, some other use of land, uh, or some other type of development, uh, the rule's a little bit different, and it's, it's mentioned in there. Um, and again, it's, it's also set out in your zoning regulations, that it's, that the, that the rule under state law is that I have, uh, my development rights vested, uh, when I have all the permits that I'm required to have, and I have commenced, uh, construction. And at that point, I have a tenure, again, a, a ten-year period of time where my development right is vested. And a city, you know, I want to hear this, but this, the city can be more liberal than the state law. You can have a longer vested period if you wanted to, but you can't drop below that ten-year period.
Does the change of ownership, if you own the property and you sell it to your wife, does that change the vestment?
It doesn't shorten or, or extend, it stays.
It's tied to the permit?
I'm sorry?
It's tied to the permit, not the owner, basically.
Yeah, to the, to the date, it's whatever, having, having the permit, yeah. If the permit has expired, you know, for some, some way or another, or there's been some fraudulent, you know, there's some fraudulent, and, and, and the permit's, uh, permit is withdrawn, then I've got, I've got a problem at that point, but.
I think, I think we try to use common sense, mostly, so.
That's okay, as long as you're common sense. As liberal or more liberal as what the state law says and, and the zoning regulations.
Now, as far as, 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 uh, that are enforceable by state law, I think we had one woman who owned, what was it, two houses, but they were all the same property, and she wanted to split them up, but they, I think the lot size was under the zoning regulations. So, you know, it, it made sense to us, well, she had separate utilities, and the houses at one time were separated, and so we allowed her to separate the, the property, even though it went against our, our current zoning regulations.
As a variance.
Okay, a variance was, uh.
Right.
Okay.
Just because it made more sense, you know, and.
Yeah. Yeah, it made, it made more sense, but it wasn't legal to do it unless you had the variance that allowed more of the decrease in the lot size.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So as long as our common sense is backed by the law.
Kind of an important backing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the, the really reality of that is, if, if we had done something wrong, it's up to the city commission to fix it anyway.
I'm not getting so very.
Well, let me, just, a moment here, just kind of, on the vesting thing, just to make sure we're all on the same page. It's the common sense thing, I understand that, but, you know, I, I want to open a restaurant, okay? I want to open a restaurant, but I don't have a vested right to develop yet, okay? I'm just kind of hanging out there, so in the meantime, before I can get my, my vested right, I am subject to all sorts of bad things happening for me, okay? I, I have my property, which at the moment is zone C1, okay? But I need, I'll need to get C2 or C3 zoning in order to put my restaurant in, okay? And what happens, uh, i- i- before I get my vested right, maybe the city initiates a text amendment that changes the permitted uses, i.e. the restaurant, and removes it from the zoning classification that I'm going to be asking for. I, I, I can't do anything about that.
That's before you pulled your permit?
Yeah, yeah, uh, or even if, if I even have the, let's say I have the, the proper zoning, I have the proper zoning, but I haven't done anything more than I just got this, I want to put a restaurant in. So I've, I've got the proper zoning to do it, but I haven't done anything at all towards, towards putting that restaurant in place. And the city comes in and initiates a rezoning of my property to residential, okay? Because as you all know, the city, city can initiate a rezoning, okay? You guys can start the ball rolling on the rezoning, okay? Over my objections, I don't want to be rezoned, but my property can be rezoned out from underneath me if, if all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. You could, before I have a vested right to develop my restaurant, you guys could change the regulations on how many parking stalls I need to have. I have to live with that, okay? Um, maybe you, you're going to make a text amendment that's going to change the lot coverage, the maximum lot coverage, that's really going to mess me up. I'm going to have to downsize my, uh, my, uh, the size of my restaurant because we changed the lot coverage from fifty percent to thirty percent.
Even after the permits are issued?
No, I haven't done, all I've got is, is efficient, like, I've got the proper zoning, and I'm talking, I mean, I'm talking to Josh about it, said, "Here's what I, here's my plan. I'm going to put this great eat-in restaurant here at the corner of Elm Street and 10th, and, uh, and that's, that's my plan, but that doesn't protect me from these changes that occur." Something that's related, you know, vesting deals with developing or developed land, okay? Or, or, but, but non-conformance law, which is, is a pretty extensive part of the handout, starts at page twenty-three, uh, i- is dealing with non-conformancing, and that's got three components. You have non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures, non-conforming lots. And I don't know if you've had people come before you, coming before the planning commission and say, uh, "King's X, uh, I'm grandfathered in, you can't do anything to me," okay? And sometimes, sometimes grandfather is the right term, sometimes it's not. Some kind of basic rules that goes back to what I was talking about in the vesting side there, the example of the restaurant. Look, the zoning that I have today, I don't have a property right in that, okay? Because the zoning can be changed, over my objection.
It lets you have a permit, right?
Well, if I, if I have a vested right to develop, yeah, I do that, but, but, but just basically, just general rule, I don't have, I, I have residential zoning, which I'm fine with. I love, I have a house, and I have no intentions to, to leave the house. So the city initiates a rezoning of my property from residential to commercial, for whatever good reason the city has, but the city initiated it, I object, I oppose, I come to, for the planning commission and say, "Please don't rezone my property." And you guys decide it's, to make a recommendation to rezone, the city commission resodes my property, okay? So now I'm, I have a residential use now in a commercial district, so I'm non-conforming now, okay? Can, can that happen? Yeah, it can happen, because I don't have a protected property right in my residential zoning. It can be taken away from me, okay? That zoning can be taken away from me lawfully, okay? And so I went from a, a legal conforming use, my house on residential zone property, now I'm over here in non-conforming, a house at commercial zone property, but I'm legal, okay? Because I was legal at the time that the rules were changed, that my use of the house on the property was legal at the time that the earth shifted, and I went from residential to commercial property, okay? So that's, that's number one. Number two is, I don't have a property right in getting an approval of a rezoning request. That may be, that's common sense, okay, but think about it, I, I want to have a rezoning, and I don't get it. Do I have a, a, do I have a property right at stake? No, I don't, but if you guys messed up in the way you handled the rezoning, I can challenge, I can challenge the denial of the rezoning, okay? And go, and make you go back through the process again until you get it right, but I can't claim that I had a property right in the approval of the rezoning request. I wanted to re-resone from residential to commercial, and you guys said no, you denied my rezoning. I don't have a legal argument to make that you've affected a property right, even I was going to make a million bucks for that commercial zoning, and because I was going to knock my house down and I was going to put up something spectacular, okay? But I, I don't, your, your refusal to rezone the property under my request doesn't trigger a property right, okay? I can challenge the reasonableness of your decision not to rezone, and I can challenge the procedure. I could say you denied me procedural due process of law because you didn't give me notice, you didn't give me a chance for a hearing, or because, uh, the decision makers were biased, okay? Any of those things can, can mess you up, but, but absent that, I, I don't have a, I, I still don't have a property right in a request for a rezoning. What I do have a, a right to is. What I do have a right to is having the continuation of the current lawful use of my property. That is a protected property right. Whether I'm conforming or non-conforming, I can continue the use of my property indefinitely as long as it was legally existed at the, at the point in time that, that the use was created, okay? Now, when you have a, a city can still remove me from my non-conforming use of property through a number of steps. Eminent domain, you know, you're going to compensate me for removing me, physically removing me from my property, okay? There's no question, that's the Fifth Amendment taking, so yes, you can exercise eminent domain, but you're going to have to pay me just compensation for, for doing it. There are also uncompensated takings of property, where you remove me from my property and my use of my property through amortization, for example. And I, I think in the sign regulations that we have, that the city has, is there provision for an amortization?
There was, but it.
It's gone, okay, all right. But, but it can be done.
But it wasn't there.
And it's, it's not uncommon in cities where you change the rules on signage, and you prohibit certain types of signs, and you endorse other types of signs, but, but I've got a sign that, that is no longer conforming. It's too tall, too ugly, whatever it is, but let's say it's structurally, it's too tall, so it's out of compliance with the new zone, sign regulations. I guess you're going to give me a period of time to remove it. You're going to say I can continue on with this sign for five years. That's an amortization period, and the courts generally, you know, if the time period is adequate, they'll allow that to happen, they'll allow me to lose my non-conforming sign through the amortization process. You get non-conforming lots through changes in lot size regulations. I have an 8,000 square foot lot that, that have a house on, the city changes the rules so that in my zoning district, the minimum lot size is now 10,000 feet. So I've got a non-conforming lot, but it was legal at the time the lot was created. I can continue to, to live on that lot, I can sell it to any of you, and whoever buys it from me can sell it to the next person. The nonconformity runs with the land, the nonconforming lot runs with the land, okay? Structures can be non-conforming, can become non-conforming. I've got a building that is 40 feet high, and that was lawful under the zoning regulations at the time that the building was built, but now a change is made in text, there's a text amendment made to the zoning regulations for the zoning district that I'm in, and it has a new, smaller, shorter, maximum height, but from 40 to 35 feet. I don't have to come in and knock off the top five feet of my building, it's, it's a legal, non-conforming structure. And again, it can be sold and used indefinitely unless the city takes it by eminent domain or, or advertises it out, okay? So the point of all this, and there's some detail in the handout about, about nonconformance, is in that, those days when somebody comes forward and said grandfather, you know, I've grandfathered in, many times that is correct. People may be correct without knowing how, why they're correct, you know, just because they, they have something on the ground right now. But, but under these rules that are pretty well set out in state law now, I, I can, I can continue that legal non-conforming status, you know, going forward. There is one, one thing that is in your regs, and it's also parallel provision in state law, and that's where there's damage to a non-conforming structure, okay? I have a, I have a house in a commercial zone property, tornado comes through, damages my house 50% or more of fair market value. By operation of state law, I cannot rebuild that house. I, I have to, I have now, commercial zoning is what applies. What I can do, I can come before the, you guys and say, I need to have a rezoning back to the residential zoning that I used to have, and if you give that to me, then I can rebuild my house, right? But if you don't give it to me, I'm out of luck, and the only use I can make of the property is what is allowed under that commercial zoning system, regulations, okay?
Good question.
It seems a little heavy-handed, but, but that, that is state law, and that's the way it works.
She has a question.
Yeah.
Question. With rezoning, say the city's going to rezone an area, what kind of notification must those property owners be given?
The notification in a rezoning? It's 200 feet out from, in all directions.
So how are they to be notified?
I'm sorry?
What does the law require the city to, what are, what are the notification requirements according to the law?
Well, it is, it's a 200-foot area, and it's actual notice, you send out mail notice, right?
Okay.
That'd be my certified.
Certified mail?
It's not certified.
Yeah.
It's just sent.
Just mailed.
We had, we had a case a few years ago, in fact, it was me personally. I owned a building, and it had a dual zoning, could be one of the few buildings in town that was commercial, you could live on the first floor, too. That's, and we don't have that for the most part. And, and I never got a notice, but I found out the city had changed it.
Oh, that is the citywide, when, when we redid all the rezoning citywide, that's what affected her.
Okay.
But I've got, but I got no notice whatsoever.
You got a newspaper.
No mail notice.
You got a newspaper, public notice is a newspaper notice.
So I was, actually, I was in Hawaii when it was in the newspaper, I didn't even know about it. I came back, it had been changed, so I just showed up to Nick's office, we had Nick then, and said, oh, it's his house.
There is a, you talked before about, you know, the one, one time you guys wear your hat, you're legislators, the other time you're quasi-judicial judges, right?
Yeah.
And all the difference, it makes all the difference in the world whether you're dealing with a site-specific property. If the city has singled out your property to, to rezonate, then yeah, you're entitled to notice, and property owners in 200 feet around are, are to get notice, okay? An actual mail notice to them, and then you've got newspaper publication notice. But where you're doing a whole new city, the whole city is being rezoned, even if 90% of the properties retain their old zoning, and you're just, you know, changing a few around the edges, it's still considered, it's a blanket of total rezoning of the property, and it is, it would be impossible, economically impossible, for the city to go out and give actual notice to each one of the parcels. If you've got, you've got a thousand parcels, you've got a couple thousand parcels.
That's like the whole city.
At that time, it was basically 100% of the property was.
It was, it was the downtown area, and I was one block from Summit, so it was the downtown area, they took that zoning from me, even though I had used it like that. So when I came back and found out, I went into the city, I confronted Nick.
This is citywide zoning.
And Nick said, well, I mailed you. And I said, no, no, I didn't get anything. So I just, I just stood in his office like this, and he said, what do you want? I said, give me back my zoning. And I just stayed, he had meetings and everything, I just stayed there, and he finally said, okay, you got your zoning, I said, give it to me in writing, and he did. So, yeah. And that zoning was valued to me, where it was the only, it was the only one downtown where you could live on the first floor.
So is this, is this a two-part presentation? I'm sorry, this is getting kind of late.
It's nine parts.
Okay, well, so will be done next, or, you know, next year.
You said you like to.
I, I could, but, you know, citywide, not to get away, but because the first point, and that's ten, when, anytime you do a citywide rezoning, you, there are, there are glitches, there are things that you're not anticipating, changes that might not be well thought through, I don't know if that was the case with your property, but what often is, what often happens is, I don't know where we did it, in our city back in 2014, 15, was to have a kind of grace period where, you know, following the adoption of the regulations, the new zoning, anybody that wanted to seek a rezoning is given an opportunity to petition for it without paying a fee. I, I don't remember if we did that or not.
I don't remember specifically.
But I've done that in some other cities where there's a period of time. But even if, even without that grace period, anybody can ask for any rezoning.
Sure.
I mean, you can ask to go back, and I don't, I don't know the details that you're talking about.
That was important because we bought the building because of that zoning. I mean, where, I'm 78, we bought the building to live on the first floor and to have studios on the second floor, and when that was taken from us, couldn't live there. So that's why we had to have it back. We did get it back.
Well, there'd be a, there'd be, you know, that would be a non-conforming use.
Yeah, you'd be allowed to continue with it.
Yeah, yeah, and we did, you know, and we sold the building.
Yeah, nonconformities run with the land.
Yeah, and they, and the people that bought it, gave it into a house, you know it?
Yeah, I believe it is a house today, so.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can move pretty quickly through the rest of stuff in 10 minutes' time. I was hoping to be out of here by eight o'clock, too, I've got that phone crying.
Move quickly, and I'll, I'll try to stay awake.
Okay, can I?
Well, I was, is there anything about subdivision regulations that anybody wants to talk about? It's, it's not dynamic like zoning, you know? Subdivision ranks are pretty, dot the Is, cross the Ts. My hunch is that when a plat comes in for you guys' approval, you sit there, and you look at the plat, and you like the drawings, and think where the easements are, and where the storm sewers are, and detention ponds and all that, but you really defer to staff and, and the engineer that put the plat together for determination that it complies with, with the subdivision ranks, right?
Yes.
I mean, it is, it's.
We haven't had one in several years.
Yeah.
There is one, by the way.
You, you guys do, the planning commission does take final action on the plats, right? So it's one of, it's a situation where you guys have, do have the last say, you know, I put in a subdivision plat for your approval, you approve it, it's approved. What happens with the city commission, city commission, is they make a, they take action on whether or not to accept or deny the dedication of a property, streets, sidewalks, easements and so on. So while they don't approve the plat, they can kill the plat by refusing to accept the dedication. That does not happen often, but it is, it is authority they have. Pages 33, starting at 33, it's conflict of interest and code of ethics, and I guess it's a matter, again, a matter of dialogue here. I've read through the bylaws that you have, and I think they cover, they appear to cover the bases. You guys have rules about substantial interests that you abstain or recuse yourself in situations of substantial interest, you make declarations of ex parte communications, and so on. Where have you had, what issues have come up? You routinely, you open up every meeting, don't you, Mr. Chairman? With asking people for any, any conflicts or declarations of... I saw in your, in your bylaws that when you have a, an ex parte communication, you are expected to disclose that and also disclose the substance of that conversation, is that? Do you actually follow that?
That statement, so that, have we had any? I haven't had any.
I'm sorry, I was, can you repeat that again?
Well, on the, the disclosure of ex parte communications, what, what do you do?
Um, I don't, I don't know, I don't think we've had that come up.
All right, number one. The biggest thing that's come up since I've been doing this is that the applicant was a planning commissioner or had substantial interest in it, and so they just automatically recuse themselves from the meeting in those cases.
Yeah.
We did, there was a case where the, there was a planning commission that would be affected and didn't recuse itself, and he did vote.
That is not, that's an older, I don't remember when that was.
In the last couple of years.
But what's supposed to happen is that they declare it.
Yeah.
And we asked, we specifically asked.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah.
So can you, can you give us an example of an ex parte situation that we?
Sure. We're, we're next-door neighbors, and I lean over the fence one day, I'm going to tell you, you know, you better vote against so-and-so's application for rezoning because he's a crook, and he, he's got a felony record, you know, in another state, and he's, has, in another town in Kansas, he got a rezoning to do a particular project and, and left the town high and dry, or all sorts of character issues, you know? So now you're prejudiced, I mean, if you believe it, or if you think there's any truth to the matter at all, if you can't just dismiss it, you know, now you, and you've got to make that determination in your own head.
Yeah.
As to whether or not you've been influenced, because if you have, if you can't deal with that issue impartially, you need to recuse yourself.
Okay. We also have something in the, in the bylaws that says specifically, and this is stricter than is required, if you're within the notification period or area, the 200-foot that you're supposed to recuse yourself to. It's not, it's not spelled out necessarily in that part of it, but I'm going to know it, because that's enough notice, so I'm going to tell you that you need to recuse yourself in that situation. But that's specifically in the bylaws.
And recusal is, is required under the bylaws.
Yeah.
See, now you guys, your bylaws, and it's not a criticism, but you actually go beyond what, what, what state law might require, and that's an example of it. Other cities will, you know, if I'm within the notice area, I disclose that, you know, in Topeka, I would disclose that, and then I would either say, because of that, I'm, I think I'm biased, I'm, I'm prejudiced, or might have the appearance of being prejudiced, so I'm going to abstain, I'm going to recuse myself. But, but to actually, your, your rules take the recusal out of the, out of the question of whether I'm biased or not, you're saying. Primarily, I suppose, for the appearance of, of conflict or bias, you, you're taking me out. You know, this subject is an important one, and I'd ask you to read the handout material on it, not because of just good government and good ethics, but when you're sitting there again as judges in your quasi-judicial capacity, if you have a bias, if you've done prejudgment, you know, like you, you told your neighbor that you're going to vote one way or the other on something, or you told the applicant you're going to vote one way or the other, or you have ex parte communications that influence you, and, and you continue to participate in the process, you may have just jeopardized all the due process, the procedural due process that you're obliged to have in a, when you're sitting as a judge, because you're no longer, you remember the components of, of procedural due process is a notice that something's going to happen, a hearing on that matter, an opportunity to be heard at that hearing, and a decision made by the partial decision maker. So you can have all the other things, but if the decision makers are crooks, I wouldn't say that, if the decision makers are prejudiced, if they're not going to base their decision on the evidence that's presented at the hearing, then procedural due process has been compromised. I mean, that's, that's the long story short, but you've got, you've got good bylaws on the point, and you need to, need to follow those bylaws. And when in doubt, I guess the only thing I could add to the bylaws is when in doubt as to whether or not you have a conflict or a bias, and talk to the city attorney.
So when in doubt, just default to recuse.
But I will tell you, there's one thing, that the law is maybe surprisingly generous towards planning commissions and city commissions on this point. Even if you make some statement that, you know, you told your next-door neighbor that you're going to vote a certain way on this issue that's coming up next week, right? Prejudgment. Prejudgment, you know, that's evidence of prejudgment. You've already decided how you're going to do something. Even in that situation, you could still participate in the action by the planning commission if, in your head, you can still be objective and unpiousy, but that, that preju, that, that statement you made is just, you know, you didn't mean it. If you can truthfully do that and, and, this is an important point, and you get into the record in the minutes of the meeting that you, that you, that you did make a statement or you did have an ex parte communication, whatever it was that raises questions about your, about your bias, you say that I am objective, I'm open-minded and I am going to make my decision only based upon the evidence in, in the record. And I may seem superficial or whatever, but, but the courts have said that if, if you state that in the record, you're probably home free. Okay? Because nobody can actually know what's going on in your head. You know, you know, 10 days ago, I made a statement to my neighbor about this application. You know, I regret making it, I shouldn't have said it. I, I am open-minded and I'm going to make my decision based upon the record. And the courts will go with that because they say we can't, nobody knows what's going on in your head.
Not even God. I never know what's going on.
Don't you know what's going on in your head?
Yes, that's what matters.
I will take just one or two more points here. I've got one more minute. And this has happened, I've seen this happen myself, okay? It's where the ex parte communications, some folks will, will follow a strategy where they don't really know which way you're going to go on, on an application, but they want to remove doubt by just getting you off of the planning commission. Okay? So they are going to tell you some information.
Yeah.
In the hopes that you'll recuse yourself.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that has happened before. I have, in my lifetime, I have seen that happen before. What do you do when somebody wants to make an ex parte communication? The, the advice given for years and years is tell people stop. You know, if you want to tell me something about Cal's rezoning application, come to the public hearing and let everybody hear it. And if they, an alternative to that, or maybe in sequence, you say, if you keep talking, I'm either going to have to abstain or I'm going to disclose what, what was said and identify you as the person who told me the information. And hopes that that would shut somebody up. Okay? Maybe it'll work, maybe not. I mean, but it's your best friend, you know, it becomes a tough, tough thing to do. You know, the bias, the appearance of bias can be a killer. It undercuts the credibility of the planning commission. It's hard to get that credibility back, you know, once it's gone.
I will also say that I've had times when somebody asked me, an applicant, who's on the planning commission? And I tend to really hesitate to answer that question. Obviously, you're a public board and, you know, regularly on the board, but they're not going to get any contact information or anything like that.
Just tell them it's on the website.
That's usually the way, the way you can do it, is just you, go find that information out, I'm just not going to give it to you right now.
Planning commission electively identified my name on the city web page?
Um, I don't.
Well, if you go look at the meeting.
I don't think it is. It just, it'd be on the agendas.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's listed out.
And to that degree, I would say that you would be within your realm of saying, I'm not going to answer that question. It's public record, go look on the city webpage.
I think they have mentioned a few names in the newspaper.
Yep.
If I recall, so.
Yep.
Well, Biden, yeah. Especially once you've been on it. People don't know who you are.
I've done finding my phone number.
Do they mention that when they appoint you guys at the city commission with the applications?
I'm sorry, what was it?
When they, when you fill out your applications and they appoint you at the city commission, do they mention names?
And address.
It has to be voted on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just know that. There is effort sometimes from applicants to try to get that information so that they hopefully do that. So I'm just warning you, sometimes I can't stop that. But I make every attempt to stop that.
Well, and the years I've been on this commission, no one has, no one has called me. I can't stop them from driving by the house or no one's called me.
Yeah, this is my third time, no one called the planning. They did it to the commission.
Yep.
But not the planning.
And that's my intention to keep that from happening. I just want you to be aware that that happens. So sometimes that's where they get it from. They specifically sought it out or that sometimes my hand, you have to give the information out, it's public record.
I bought, I bought a treatise years ago about, because I, the treat by the heading, it seems like representing clients in land use matters or something like that, which I don't do, I represent governments. But I thought, there was an entire chapter in that book about lobbying planning commissioners, you know? And a strategy for, you know, approach your planning commissioners, give them misinformation, you know, and lay it all out there and get everything, get all your ducks lined up before the public hearing. And some developers will, some developers, some property owners will assume that's just the way it is, that that's the way, that's the smart way to do things. And it does happen, it does happen.
Good. Yeah, are we finished?
Well, we didn't get to extra territorial zoning. You okay with that?
Yeah.
We talked about that quite a bit earlier.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
You can adjourn. Thank you all. Thanks for giving up your evil heart.
Thank you for coming and being here. Go take your survey. I took mine earlier today, actually.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Didn't mean to put you to sleep.
That's all right, it's not your problem. It's tough when we work all day. Try and stay awake.
I get, I'm going to keep awake because I'll keep seeing deer jumping off.